This conference will now be recorded.
How do I turn that off?
Kenny?
What?
Hey, how's it going?
Dude, get different shoes.
I think I can see them.
No, they don't. They don't work. They're officially broken.
Get it from?
Or just talk about it.
That was pretty.
Ever to clear that up?
And some. Oh, I don't think.
I have.
Has it texted me?
Good afternoon. Can I just note that I was here before five o'clock today? Can I just note that I was here before five today?
Yay.
Me too.
Good afternoon.
Me too. Yes, sir. Steven Spina? Jody Wilkerson? Lance Smith? Kenneth Burgess?
Here.
Charles Proctor?
Here.
Mayor Munson?
William Poe?
Here.
Matthew Maggers?
Here.
Thank you. Okay, we'll go right into the business items. Business item one is approval of the July 22nd, 2024 meeting minutes. Do we have a motion?
I make a motion that we pass all of them. It looks like we have, what, seven?
Can we do it all at once? It's not a consent.
Oh, I don't know. Maybe not.
No.
All right, I'll do one through four.
All right, let me re. I'd like to get an approval, well, a motion on items, business items, one, one to one point five, four, approval of minutes from July to November.
I make a motion that we pass?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
This is unanimous. Item 1.5, paint grant, Ms. Hamilton?
Yes. The grant implication is for 5319 11th Street. You have in your, it looks a little better than that picture right there. That's an older picture.
Looks better in person.
I hope so.
The next page. This is the paint and trim that he wants to use on the house. Yes, it's a little darker than we usually do, but we do not regulate paint. We just, the CRA looks at it as paint will help preserve the building and so paint, new paint is a good thing. The grant meets all the recommendation or all the requirements and staff recommends approval.
Thank you. Question?
Yeah, I, I think the color is not really that bad with the landscape. I mean landscaping and the, you know, the trees, the way it is, it kind of fits anyhow, so.
Yeah.
Is that a dark green?
Yes.
And I drove by the house. It does look better. When you're there.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It looks kind of rough in the picture there, but it looks better.
But the family is working on it and, and so we want to encourage them and, and the paint is a good way to start.
And I'll move for approval of a business item 1.5.
I'll second.
Hey, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes, no nays. Item 1.6, Ms. Hamilton?
Okay, this is the Parks and Rec master plan. We are in phase two currently. The team is working on using the information that we got in the first phase on the vision and the guiding principles, what the public told us they wanted to see in their park, in the parks. They are working on mapping a level of service gaps. So if we had people saying they wanted to play pickleball, how many pickleballs do, you know, courts do we have? And they will count not just city-owned, but counting any, any courts that are available to the public. So they are mapping out what is going on in East Pasco? What's happening? What type of parks? What are we doing in our parks? And they will come back with some recommendations. One of the things that they are asking of us is to do a public meeting, to do a workshop with the CRA. We're looking at, I also need to do a workshop on the CRA master plan that I will get to next or in, in my report. So do you want to pick an off Monday? And, and do a workshop where we do both Parks and Rec and we do the CRA master plan? I need to invite the public. We need to take public input. So the CRA master plan is going to take an hour to an hour and a half and, and an hour for the parks. So it's up to you. I'd like to get a date so that we can start informing the public. Since we're going to do both of them, I'd really like to look at March.
I think we'll probably need a. March.
City manager, do you have the, you know, like the first Monday in March is?
Third.
Would that work?
Remember, we moved the March meeting back one week to the 31st. But, but of course, 24th doesn't, that doesn't help for the 24th because the reason we had to move it because some of us won't be here, so.
Correct. So the, for March, we have the third and the 17th open.
Want to do the 17th or the third? Or is that, the 17th is the day you're not going to be here?
Oh, that's March, April, February 17th. Yeah.
It's, it's your pleasure. 17th?
May I ask?
I'm open both days.
We are going over the Zephyr Hills Park?
All of the parks.
Oh, okay.
All of the parks and, and the city, all city parks. And, and the idea is, do we need parks and, and are we missing a park? Or is there a location in the city that does not have good access for the citizens to get to? All of those things will be discussed.
March 3rd.
Would it help if we went to 17th to give Hercules a month of being online where we can kind of, give the people to see how that fits into what they're looking for and everything?
That's a great idea. Yeah. Okay, so that works?
All right. Oh, good.
So we'll say the 17th.
Okay, and what are the regular meetings that month on the?
The 10th and 31st.
Okay. And the 24th?
34th, because some of us have been Tallahassee.
Oh, yeah.
Do you have, I'm sorry, do you have planning permission on the 17th?
No, he has, he's on Tuesday.
You're on Tuesday.
Oh, all right, all right.
Billy asked me to ask.
Just making sure our news is the beginning of the week. I just remember which, all right.
So we should be good with the 17th?
At what, six o'clock or five?
Do you want to do five? Or six works better for, for the group?
Five thirty been a few? Yeah, I think five will be okay. I'll just make a light day that day.
We could do five thirty if that would make it easier.
Because you're talking at least two and a half hours of what you were thinking, so.
No, let's do five.
Okay, five o'clock on the 17th.
At five o'clock?
Five.
Okay.
The other, one other thing that I, I wanted to bring up and, and let you know that staff and, city staff, GAI, our parks consultant, as well as, Public Works and our city manager are working with Pasco County to identify locations for county parks as well. So we'll have some information on that for you on the 17th. So it is comprehensive. We're looking at not just the city, but what is the county doing as well? And they're being incredibly helpful. We're working very well with them.
And then this then is just kind of for our reference. Now to read?
I'm going to get to that. That's the CRA master plan.
All right.
We've got too many, we've got too many master plans going on right now.
Oh, I see. All right.
So that's all I have on our parks plan. The next thing that we have up is the master park signage plan. And do you have that in your backup? Bring that up. Okay. So these are the parks that we are looking at right now, the existing city parks. Depot Park, Ellis Harold Park, Gunner Paw Park, Cruzen Park, Shepherd's Park, Transplant Park, and Veterans Memorial. We are not including Zephyr Park or Hercules in this because we are currently in construction and planning with both those parks. Hercules has their signage through the construction and Zephyr Park will as well. So these are the parks that we are looking at. The idea is location for signage, where it's going to be located and what type of sign, large sign, small sign. Transplant Park is the little park, the little pie-shaped park that's next to 16th and, and, what is that, 12th? Thank you. Can you go to the next? So this is looking at Depot Park. And you'll see that where the boxcar is, and the proposed monument sign will go right either in front or behind, however you want to say it. And that's what's being proposed.
Ask a question. Talk about large signs and small signs. What is a large sign?
A large sign?
I mean, 20 feet?
A large sign would be this, a large sign like is being used at Hercules on Highway 301 with the panel and the, column thing.
It's 20 feet, though, according to this?
Yes.
And then the small sign is?
It's just the column. And we'll use that at, at the two small parks. There's really, and we'll get to it, we can look at size and location. Can we go to the next one? So that's just taking pictures of the best location for the signage. We'll take down the sign that says Depot Park. Next one?
Shifting those signs from the west side to the east side.
Because, one, the depot is beautiful.
Right, they block the thing.
And it blocks the, the building itself. So this is Ellis Harold Park. And you'll see we don't have a lot of room. But that's where you see the proposed monument sign. We'll remove the existing sign and, and it will replace it. It'll, it'll be 16 feet high. So it's going to have presence on the street. We just don't, we don't have enough room there for anything larger than that.
How tall is it going to be?
16 feet.
Oh, where does it say that? All right, that 16 feet is from the roadway to the fence line.
You're right, you're right.
Because we don't allow anything more than 10 feet.
That is correct.
Council, I'm making, or commission, I'm making sure that park signs meet city codes.
Actually, weight binding signs are exempt from city code.
Oh, all right.
So that's where it will be. Now, one of the things that we will bring back to you is if y'all are okay, if you agree to the locations and the, and the signage, we'll bring back the actual images that are going to be placed there so you can get a feel for exactly what they look like. They'll all be based on, you've seen the signs at, at Hercules. They'll all be based on, on that image or that.
Hopefully, they're not all going to cost as much as that one.
Um, no. Some of them. But we'll come back with prices for you. We do have funding budgeted in this year's budget.
Yeah, yeah, those are smaller ones.
No, no.
You know, we, a while ago, Todd had come up a little proposal on South Avenue, doing some improvements along there too. And we were kind of saying that'd be like our gateway to the industrial area by the airport or something. I don't know if we would want to note that on the sign too or not. I mean, just something to think about.
And we have talked about that. We started this with just the existing parks. We will do an addendum because we had talked about the commercial. Not only that, this doesn't show the entrance signs. We are trying to locate.
Right, that's why I was going to ask about the entrance signs. And then I believe out there on 39 and Chancy, aren't, aren't that one development supposed to be putting in a sign, something, was it putting in a sign too? So that, I mean, that's going to follow our standard, you know, same thing that we want, right? Is that correct on that?
So they're not putting in the sign, they're giving us easement for this.
Is that what it is?
Yes.
Okay, okay. I thought, I thought they were contributing to the sign for some reason.
That's the storage unit, right?
Todd, you have to pay attention.
Yeah, the storage unit that's going out there on 39, they're giving us easement to put in a sign, but. But we're paying for the sign.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, I thought, I thought.
Right, right.
Okay, okay.
There you go.
I thought, I knew, I knew we were going to do something and I thought maybe we're kind of contributing to it, but that's okay. Steve, do you remember the, the first Depot Park sign when they first moved the depot there that my class made for you guys?
That's cool.
That was a little.
You know, your classmate?
Yeah, the original sign.
That brings up, at Hercules, there's been some questions about if we could put up the original old, county sign that was there.
Yes, we're saving it. It will go back up. Okay, good.
There's one for the depot also somewhere. One of those historic signs. It might still be up in the ground, in the ground.
I'm sorry, I missed something. What sign are we talking about?
Historic preservation from the county, the signs that are.
Oh, like the ground signs?
Yeah, the green. I mean, it might be in the ground there.
Might be on land. I haven't paid.
I don't know that we've.
I haven't paid attention lately, but.
It's one of those things you drive by.
Oh, no, it says existing historical marker to remain. Never mind. Okay.
Okay, good.
But we have the one for Hercules too.
Okay, good, because that was a big deal.
To go back to what Commissioner Burgess said, if, you know, if you look at where the monument sign's going on the depot, go back to the depot.
Can you go back on? One more.
And you have the sign there. Is there room on the other side or that looks like a fence, maybe? You could put another sign there that says, welcome to the industrial park or airport park or.
And it doesn't have to be a big one.
It looks like there's a fence up there, a dark shadow up there. That must be a fence.
Well, we can, I mean.
Yes, to the east of that black line, or excuse me, to the west of that black line, there is a fence. That delineates, excuse me, the property line, depot line to the CSX right away.
No, I'm talking about north on the other side of South Avenue.
North side of South Avenue, there is not a fence.
Do you have the thing? Talking about.
Well, I didn't think about it. I could have done it for you.
It's, I, I think I know what you're talking about. Just to the left of the trees, there's, yeah, that's a, that is a fence. I don't know what the right of way line is right there, but yes.
Yeah, right in there.
Didn't have to be nothing fancy.
No.
Well, now, Commissioner, we like fancy.
Or you want my class to build another one?
Okay, I, we will, I will bring that up to James and, and Kelsey who are doing the signage.
But it looks like there's a gray area there. There must be a fence too.
I think that's.
Yeah, to the north, to the north of where it says South Avenue.
So I don't know if it's too close. We don't want it to, somebody to drive off the road and hit it or something.
So maybe we, if, if the commission can give us the leeway to, find us a sign location in that corridor, we can go out there and field locate.
You know, we kind of match there, you know, but I don't know if there's room there. So yes, we'll give you the.
Okay, all right. Because maybe, maybe it's closer to Airport Road, where it truly starts, so. Yeah.
Okay, we'll, we'll follow up on that. Can we go to the depot? We've done Ellis Harold. And that's just showing the location of Ellis Harold and, and space. Next is Gunner Paw. So you'll see that the proposed monument sign will be removed and, and replaced with the new one. And it will be a large sign as well. I'm sorry?
It's a pretty small park.
Yeah, it's, well, and it'll all be relative again. We'll bring back the actual measurements for you so you can see them.
Well, we have pricing along with that or no?
No, sir. Once we decide exactly what it is we want, then we'll send it out and, and.
And they'll separate it out for us?
Yes, sir.
And maybe a couple we can do, two.
Sure.
The one?
I was saying maybe for, like this one, if we decide we don't want the smaller one, maybe we could get a price for both and then we could decide.
Decide which one. Can we go to the next one? This is still Gunner Paw. And then this is Cruzen Park. And right now, we're trying to, we're working on, there is an existing skate park sign that's at the bowl. And whether we need to remove that and do something else. But if you look at it, it's all on one piece of property. And so we even thought about maybe putting a sign at the bottom of it that said, you know, at Cruzen Park or with the Z on it to, to try and, again, save some money. There's nothing wrong with that sign. But the entrance sign, the existing sign will be removed, the proposed one, you see it right there. And it will be a, it will be a large sign. There's a lot of area there.
Today and looked at the, shelter they're building, the, over the bleacher and everything, that's going well.
It ought to be solid.
It is. Seal or something.
It, it won't blow away.
Red iron.
So again, that's the location of, and then this is Shepherd's Park and we're trying, we're working on Shepherd's Park to try and be maybe designed a little different so that as you're coming into town, it says, welcome to Zephyr Hills. As you're leaving, it says Shepherd's Park. Or maybe it says both and then we have a tower that says Shepherd's Park on it. But we're trying to find a way to do both an entrance and a park sign because we have, we have the land there and trying to find property along 301, not easy to do.
That's a good idea, maybe put the welcome on the sign and then the Shepherd's Park on the tower.
So they're going to do a couple of renderings so that we can look at it and decide what we want. So, and then, the other issue too will be electricity. All of the signs currently are planned to have electrical with the backlighting.
Could you do solar or?
Interesting. I, that's a question I'll ask.
I mean, it'd probably be cheaper than running power and all that.
I'm hoping that most of the locations we've chosen have power close to them and, and.
Well, if they've got power close, yeah.
Yeah.
That's the way to go.
Next one. So those are the site photos. Maybe when we do the sign, we can do something about the Z post as well.
Some of these things are maybe.
Older. Yes, they've.
Yeah, they looked pretty good when we did it, but in retrospect. Yeah, in retrospect.
Um, next one. And then this is the little transplant park. One of the things that Main Street asked, the design committee asked, currently we have a sign up there that does community events. And people in the neighborhood can post their little flyers for yard sales or something like that. They're going to design the sign to have a bulletin board on it as well.
We drove by there the other day and there were people sitting in the chairs.
It's, you know, I've seen at lunchtime, right now it's, you know, it's nice weather. Last week was not. But this week, hopefully, we'll have some good weather to use them. And we really would like to have electricity at, at Transplant just because it'd be nice to light that, the park up and light those trees up at night. It would be beautiful.
I want to tell you this. It has nothing to do with this, but I was at the doctor's the other day and he had the TV on and they were doing weather report and they were talking about opening shelters. And there was an older couple there, obviously from like Indiana or somewhere. And the guy looks at his wife and says, these people have no idea what cold is. And I cracked up.
Yes.
Should have been washing cars with me last Tuesday and Wednesday.
Anyway, I'm sorry. I just thought that was pretty funny. When you said that.
Our Jeff, the maintenance guy, I mean, it was 26 degrees and he had his shorts on out there working. He goes, I'm from the, from Michigan. You don't know what cold is. He said this.
I've not been here very long.
Meg, is that the last one? Yeah, and that's transplant. So we're going to try and come up with something for transplant. And then Veterans Memorial Park will get a large sign. Veterans Park has, has not been, I don't know, recognized or?
Yeah, it hasn't really been utilized.
It's not utilized. That's the word I'm looking for. So we're hoping that with better signage, some of the recommendations that will come from the master park plan, that Veterans Park will start being used, that we will provide the neighborhood with what the, you know, some amenities in that park that they will use in.
Idea, you could take the Vet. For a park.
Okay, we'll let you make that.
Love conversations on that offline.
Kind of along those lines though, it would be kind of good to get like, like with AMVets or VFW, some of those organizations to see if they would want to like partner and do something out there or the different branches of the service or something. So there's just, you know, just a little something out there. It's not, it's, yeah, it's not really an amenity that they can like play on or do something with, but at least it kind of ties in with the whole veterans thing too.
How many picnic tables and such are in that park?
I think none. Yeah, I think it's mostly been like a open space. An open, open space and, yeah, maybe we could put a couple.
We should.
We could put a couple pavilion things out there and.
If it's a park, I mean.
And that's, I mean, that's part of, we own the land and so having the park master plan make some recommendations to us of what can be there.
And honestly, sometimes people want to do something but be a little quiet, you know, if you're having a birthday party or something. You don't necessarily want to go to Zephyr Park and be with like a lot of other people walking through your area and stuff and it'd be a little nicer area to.
Right. More contemplative, you know?
This trail was just resurfaced last week, I think it was, so.
What's the distance of it? Anybody know? All the way around?
Yeah. That could be something the youth can. Let's jump into.
Do I have another picture? Yeah. I mean, it's just barren out there, so it, we need to work on that as part of the Parks and Recreation Master Plan. So the next thing I have up is my, the CRA Master Plan. So this is our plan update. Now you all have the, I gave you hard copies. When we do this meeting in March, when we do the workshop in March, some of this will come up. So I wanted to give you advanced information so that you wouldn't, you would have it and could ask questions. Next page. So the vision statement, dedicated to fostering an exceptional quality of life in the CRA by creating a vibrant, safe and inclusive community that honors our heritage and celebrates our future. So I, this is a change from our last vision, so I'd like you to, to really look at it and give me some feedback on it on the 17th. The guiding principles that we are using in updating the plan, prosperity, heritage, diversity, resilience and place making, all the things that we need, the CRA needs to look to to try and make the district better. You know, I say all the time that creating improvements or betterment in the CRA is like taking a 500-piece puzzle and throwing it up and trying to put the pieces together. If we're going to be successful, it will not be one thing that will make us successful. It will be many things that we put together and create something to make the district better. So some of the big moves that we have talked about, creating a greenway loop connecting on the downtown destinations, all of the parks, transforming Ball Boulevard into a mixed and livable corridor, restoring Zephyr Creek. Now, remember, when you see something like that on the CRA's master plan, for the CRA to spend a dime, it has to be in the plan. We have to mention it. Now, doing anything for Zephyr Creek is way over the CRA's capability. But if we are going to be a partner in it, if we're going to help in any way, it has to be in the plan. So that's why it's in there. Redesigning Fifth Avenue as a more walkable space and when I say Fifth Avenue, remember we're talking in front of the park from First Street down to 301.
Ramblin'.
Do you remember the, a couple of, probably six months ago, we did a, they did a plan that showed how you could transform Fifth Avenue and put parking in the middle?
Oh, okay. All right, that's the inner parking lot.
And what we're looking at doing first is to just do it with paint. You know, not, let's see if it works. Let's see if it works with the redesign of Zephyr Park. Now every time I say that, somebody in the audience will say, or somebody in the group will say, "Do you remember when we created a faux roundabout?" And so it makes me, makes me nervous. Invest and expand Main Street. We have to make Main Street bigger than just the three blocks of Fifth Avenue. We have to go down Eighth and Ninth and, and start looking at the side streets and how we can make those side streets more successful. And again, this is not written in stone. This is, these are pictures to get people talking. That's all. So this is the, the old SunTrust site. And looking at making it a two-story housing on that site. You'll also notice that it's one-way traffic. I'm sorry, it's two-way traffic. Next, I'm sorry. This is at Fifth Avenue and 16th. Right where the parking lot is of the Catholic Church. What is that there? Social Hall? But it gives an idea of how, how we can look at the CRA district. Change is happening. I would rather see development like this, that is small-scale development, so that we can keep some of the green space for, for parks and other entity, you know, for other activities. And people, this is what, you know, the market is, is looking for. So it, this is a three-story, it's got retail on the bottom and two-story above the retail. Again, these are just pictures for you to look at. I want you to look at the scale of the buildings and how they fit on the street. The Stormwater Park, again, the Stormwater Park is way past the CRA's abilities, but we are just showing it to help further that conversation and should the CRA be asked if it's in the plan, I can spend, the CRA can spend money on it. So here's some of the goals, objectives and strategies that we are talking about using. And, and this is all draft. I need you to look at it. We'll do the presentation on the 17th and go through these with you. But if you have any questions between now and then, let's talk about it. If you don't like something, let's talk about it so we don't even have it in the, in the presentation. There's no sense wasting time on something that the CRA board is not on board with.
Pretty small.
We'll get a link and have it sent to you so that you have it. We'll get a link and send it to you.
Alright, thanks.
Yeah, just because I think I missed something. On the 17th, we're doing the Parks Master Plan and the CRA Master Plan, both?
Yes.
Okay, alright. I missed that part. I thought we were just doing one.
It's a twofer.
I missed it.
That's right, it's a two.
So you better have food here.
I'll make sure and it's good.
No, no, because, well, yes.
So one of the things that we've been working with planning on is looking at one zoning category for the CRA. Trying to make, because currently, and Todd, if you have something to say, just jump right in. We're trying to make it easier for the public, for commercial businesses and residential to understand, developers understand the CRA and the Form-based code. And make it easier right now, if you want to build something in the CRA, Planning or Building sends you up to see me. You don't even talk to Planning until the CRA is completed. What we'd like to do is create something that's easy, that one person can do it. It, it doesn't require you to go up and down the floors. Next one?
Wait, go back a second if you could. By saying one zoning category, you mean there wouldn't be like an R2 or commercial, it would be zone CRA or something, everything, no matter what you are?
And we haven't worked our way through that, correct?
And about eliminating all the different ones and making one.
Um, in a, in a certain way. And just in how it is presented. I think that the underlying will still be there, but zoning is, is Todd's baby. It, I mean, it thing, it's not mine. So I am looking to Planning to help us with this and our consultants. Again, for the CRA, I'm just trying to make it as easy as possible for people to understand it.
It would almost be, I'm sorry, I cut you off, like a big PUD.
Yeah, yes, sir. Yes, sir. And, and the idea is if it's easy to understand and you see as a developer or a business opportunity, then you'll follow that up. You'll come in and see us. You'll sit and talk to us about your business or what you want to do. So the whole idea is to just make it easier to understand.
Wouldn't plunk like a hardware store in the middle of housing development?
Right, correct. Yeah, there, there will be, what we talked about the other day was. Yes. So then we start looking at the Form-based code and the organization of it and the design standards and the organization. Again, the whole idea is to make it one document and not multiple documents. Here's a draft of the regulating plan. We'll look at street classifications, how the streets will look, the alleys, you know, we've talked for the last couple of years about the benefit of the alleys and how developing the alleys will provide more opportunity for housing in the district as well.
When you say development, you're not talking paving, you're just talking cleanup and such?
No, no, I'm talking paving.
The only problem, all of our water lines run through the alleys and we'd have to dig it up every time there was an issue. And repave it.
Well, it's, it's like, in one of the images they showed, they did ribbons of concrete so that the pipes were in the middle and, and you, the tires rode on.
The two, like, okay, yeah, you'd have two and the, yeah, two tracks. The driveways like.
Yes, the old driveways were that way as well.
Yeah, yeah.
So I will send, I did not realize that it was hard for you to read the, the paper copy. I'll send you a, a link. Well, that way you can make it bigger if you need to or whatever. So that is, and again, we'll, we'll come back to this on the 17th.
Pretty interesting.
There's been a lot of staff time put on that, so. So the next thing is my director's report and I just have some updates for the CRA board. Clock Plaza, in the 2425 approved budget, there is funding to redo Clock Plaza. Staff has created the solicitation and instead of giving it to one, and I don't mean giving, but using one of our design companies that we already have under contract, we're going to put it out to, to new firms. We're going to put it out and see what we get back. And that scared me. So hopefully we will get that going right away. The plaza has got, or the Clock, Clock Plaza has gotten to the point where the trees, the roots are growing out. They've ground the concrete till they can grind it anymore. The pavilion needs to be redone, so we're going to look at the entire site and come up with a game plan for it. Again, we will start the process, the CRA and the merchants downtown and the, and the residents will be involved. They'll have an opportunity to have their input as well. It will still be a park. It will still be used for events downtown. None of that will change. Hercules Park Grand Opening. I hope everybody has it on their calendar for the 13th, February 13th. We are going to have commemorative giveaways. The city is providing and the CRA is providing frisbees and koozies that have Hercules 2025 on them. We will have food, we'll have music. Morton Smith is getting involved. They are also providing giveaways. It's going to be a fun day. We will have the elementary schools. Both West and Woodland will participate. I'm still waiting on, I take that back, I'm waiting on confirmation from West, but I should have that.
What time was that again?
12 o'clock. Yes. No, we're going to open it to the public. We're going to start, Kevin is going to start teasers that say, you know, 15 days. We'll do a countdown clock. Because after we finish with the grand opening, the park's open.
Is it possible for us to do some short videos showing what's there, maybe interview a couple of people and put them on some of our things too, so that kind of gets the word out there too?
Yes, Kevin is, we have a new intern and she's going to go out there tomorrow and take some video. We're also going to have some people speak on the video and talk about it. So yes, the whole idea is to promote it as much as we possibly can and show what, what great amenities are out there.
When we did the groundbreaking, we invited some people that had lived there. Do you still have that list and could you invite them, give them a call?
Because I'll be interested to see what they think of the educational signage that we put up talking about Hercules.
And the stumps and the, and the, and the restroom building that looked like the hot cabins.
I would like to take that project with the workers a little further. You know, when we first started talking about Hercules and we did the public meetings, having something, a piece of art or a public display for the workers of Hercules was always discussed, kind of got cut out of the budget as we were doing this. But I haven't forgotten it and we want to, and there is a location in the park for an art piece. So we would like to do something like that as, as we move forward. And I'll make sure whoever asked about the county sign, I'll get it out there before the, before the grand opening. We need to make sure it's.
Yeah, it's at the city yard.
I know where it is. I don't know what condition it is.
Is, is there anything left of the Hercules Powder Company? Is it, I mean, was it bought, just completely gone or were they bought out by something else or?
No, they're still, DuPont still owns them.
So it is something, so I mean, might be worth contacting them, just kind of throw a little history out there and see if maybe they might want to contribute to something like, little art piece or something like that.
I've emailed, I've, I've written letters.
Oh, and they don't care?
I've gotten no response.
Oh, so they don't, okay, oh, you're leasing.
And I thought I had a really, exactly, you know?
Yeah.
Trying to get them to participate.
Doesn't seem like it would be that much, but.
Yeah, they weren't interested. Zephyr Park, we continue to work with water management. The county staff is working with Kenley Horn. Yes, we want to be very sensitive to the idea of the flooding issues in, in the park and how we move forward with that. We'll have more information as it comes available. Our tree program. The arborist that we hired is working on recommendations for residents in the historic neighborhoods so that the trees that they plant do not interfere with water lines, sewer lines or electric lines or are a hazard to what is that, site safety or site triangle, the site triangle? Fifth Avenue, Eighth Street and Oakside Cemetery Project, that's where we're redoing the sidewalk on Eighth. We're taking out the planter. It's at the corner of Fifth and Eighth and extending the sidewalk. We're waiting right now for the structural engineer to provide the construction plans for the sidewalk and we'll be out to bid on that. New businesses in the district, Pompano Coffee, they got their grant from the CRA, what, two weeks ago? Their contractor's already been in, submitted the plans. They are hoping to be open and. They are hoping to be open in a couple of months. We also have Nostalgia Pizza. Uh, they were slated to be here tonight, but they had some issues with their sign and hopefully they'll be on next month's, uh, agenda.
Are you, who is that?
Nostalgia Pizza.
Oh, okay.
They'll be, it'll be next to.
Oh, they're, oh, okay.
The coffee place, it'll be the ice cream, coffee and pizza businesses, one side by side. Um, and we are working on the next community cleanup. The date will be in February. Um, I need to work with the community groups and make sure we don't pick a Saturday that has something going on, but, which is not an easy feat in the wintertime, but, um, we'll have that information out and start publishing, uh, publicizing it, um, then. And that's all I have.
All right, thank you. Um. Any questions?
Nope.
Okay.
In one spot.
Mr. Main Street.
I'm down for it. All right, so, um, a couple of things. There's so much happening with Main Street and, um, we're extremely excited about all of the opportunities that are coming our way. First and foremost, we want to talk about the Festival of Lights recap. Um, Festival Light was, as you'll see in a few seconds, it was well received, um, not just within the city and within the community, but outside. Um, we actually, with a, um, donation from Advent Health, who was also the grand marshal, um, and our title sponsor, we received a $5,000 title sponsorship. And also with the, um, income from the vendors and things as such, we made, um, a close, over $10,000 combined with the sponsorship and the everything else, so kudos to that. We were, um, voted by ABC Action News, or it was, it was talked about ABC Action News, as a, as a very high vote for, um, Christmas events. And Ricardo, if you don't mind? Don't worry about it, you can cut it off, we don't care who won.
Okay.
So I can tell you right now that we are not gonna be satisfied. Negotiation with a top-ranked firm, FMW Design. And at the same time, our president Linda is working with our committee to raise funds for renovations along with Senator Burgess and Representative Magger. Um, Main Street is committed, Main Street Zephyr Hills is committed to creating cultural arts center for East Pasco community. So we're all excited about this. Um, I know there's been talk about the theater for some time and things are getting going on that. Next up is the mural update. For any of you that have not seen, there's been a collaboration between the city, the chamber and Main Street Zephyr Hills. Ricardo? And that is very, um, zoomed in, but, oh, it looks, yeah. But it, I, we feel like it was a great, um, result. And we're negotiating or talking right now about when we'll do a, a, official reveal. Um, it'll probably be sometime around Founder's Day. And we'll bring the artist out and let her talk about where her inspiration was and talk about it. But the community has been very, very supportive and, um, we've heard a, a lot of positive reviews from the mural. And if you haven't had a chance to see it, please make sure you stop by the Chamber Building and take a look at it. Thank you. Fancy Flea event is happening this upcoming weekend. Um, we are very excited about having Fancy Flea to come to Zephyr Hills. They are, um, they have been well-received in other areas that they've participated, Brooksfield and Plant City and Lakeland. And so we're excited about what's gonna take place this weekend. I invite everyone to come out on February 1st. Um, just to make aware, streets will be closed Friday night for them to get preparation and then early Saturday morning. And we're looking for a pretty good turnout and good weather. Cross Streets on 8th and 9th will remain open, but just in front of the merchants, which we have talked to merchants for the past couple of weeks and we will also be continuing conversation just so that everyone is aware of what'll be open and what'll be closed. And Florida Main Street Regional Board Training, February 18th, we're very excited about this. So Zephyr Hills will be the hosting site of Florida Main Street Regional Board Training and we will have, I think, close to 25 additional Main Streets visiting our city. This is a really big deal, uh, especially for me, because I always talk about how great Zephyr Hills is when I'm at these trainings. So we want to make sure that we are putting our best foot forward. I encourage anyone who has an opportunity to participate or attend some of this training. It will be done right here in the Chamber's council. And yeah, we, there's gonna be a lot of, um, visiting Main Street programs and they'll get to see who we are.
All right.
Any questions?
You're just doing a great job, a lot of good things going on. Thank you very much.
What's the venue for, for the conference host?
Well, the training will be inside of the council's chambers. And then, um, there, we are, you're always encouraged when you attend these events to kind of go out and engage with some of the local. So, um, I, we'll be talking to some of the local businesses to see what we can offer up. Um, and may even have some surprises that come and, and represent us in, in, in the council chair or in, in the city hall as well. So as of right now though, council chambers. I would like for everyone, but yes, Mayor, I would.
Now, would you send us like an email or something?
Yes, sir.
So like a.
Not a problem.
All right, great, because I'd like to come too. Any questions?
Thank you so much.
All right, thank you. Okay, we have a few minutes. The last item on our agenda is citizens' comments. Um, Ricardo, do you have anybody signed up?
I have nobody signed up.
Okay, is there anyone in the audience who has a comment regarding the CRA? No?
The online would like to speak?
So.
Can you please state your name and address and you'll have three minutes to speak?
Sure, sure. My name is Gladys Gonzalez. My address is 6502 Bar S Bar Trail, Zephyr Hills 33541. And my question or my concern is with.
Hey, Ms. Gonzalez, you're cutting in and out and we, we're having a hard time hearing you.
Can you hear me better?
Yes.
I hear you all now. You muted yourself.
Okay, hold on, can you, can you hear me better?
Yes.
Are you able to hear me? Okay. My concern is when it comes to street parking in our community, uh, we have a very narrow road to start with. I've reached out to the CDD and I get no response. And when I get no response, I, if, if I do get one, it's bit of. Parking, which I have, the sheriff's department has confirmed that our road is, um, it's part of the CDD. I've reached out to the HOA, I've reached out to code enforcement. It's multiple people and we just get tossed around like a hot potato. It doesn't get addressed. It's an issue like, uh, when you're trying to drive out of your car or out of your driveway, it's on both sides of the road. So it makes it very hard to see. By the time that you're able to see up the road, there's already cars parked there. Like, there was a car accident here with a parked cart one time. It's just become a huge issue with the residents. What do we do about this? I've reached out to the people that I was told to reach out to and I get no response and no resolution to any of the concerns.
So, um, so this is not a CRA issue. Um, it, it's city issue. Um, and I believe, I did, I did not catch the street name. I believe it's Abbott Square. Um, myself, code enforcement, city attorney talked about this last week. Um, and we're looking into it. The issue is, is that subdivision, private roads, very similar to Hidden River. Uh, if you remember, Hidden River came in, uh, Mr. Johnson came in, had conversations wanting us to enforce rules there that are HOA, CDD enforced, uh, rules. So, um, as a staff, we've looked at it. I'll make sure that we reach out and have a conversation with Ms. Gonzalez, but I don't know that there's much we can do, uh, as far as the, the parking on the street goes, but we'll look at it again.
Is the streets, you're not, because the streets are private?
And I think my, my, my community, my, my community, so I'm not sure if you were able to catch the whole thing. I have personally reached out to Mark, um, part of the CDD, which it's very hard to get ahold of him because we get very little answers and when we do, they're completely like, he sends me to the people that he knows is not gonna help. For example, he sent me to the sheriff's department. I've copied, literally copied everything that they have told me, that code enforcement had told me, that HOA had told me. Like, I forward it back to him and I'm like, you are responsible. It comes up to part of CDD, you guys on the road, and he just stops answering. At this point, it's more of a, go ahead.
Ms. Gonzalez, does, is the HOA or is it still CD or is the CDD still develop or run? Or do the homeowners have control of the CDD now?
They.
Yeah, we, we can have a conversation with you. Uh, it, it, and just for council, we'll reach out to Ms. Gonzalez, but for council, the HOA or the CDD will have to put a rule in place that there's no street parking. Is, this is exactly what happened in, in Hidden River. Um, they, they wanted city to come in and enforce no parking on the streets. HOA for Hidden River put in a rule in their HOA docs, no parking on the streets. And they have a fine system and guess what? They have no parking on the streets now. So it's gonna be an HOA issue, but we'll reach out to Ms. Gonzalez. We'll get her number. Um, do we have her address? Can we, do we know what it is? We can find it.
Have her type it for me.
Okay, yeah, ask her if she can type her phone number and then we can reach out to her tomorrow.
Oh, thank you.
Very close to turning over the CDD to the residents. It's, they had their, I think, an initial election or, or at least a request for folks to, um, to volunteer for those positions.
Okay.
So.
But there's no other issues before the CRA, the meeting's adjourned. Thank you.
Just let everybody know we're taking a five-minute break.
Yeah, five, okay, five minutes.
Where do I type up my information? Oh, I think I see it.
Use the chat feature, please. I sent you a message.
I see it, thank you.
It's March, March 17th. We have a workshop yet. And we'll send out, we'll send out notifications again, but March 17th, 5:00 PM for the CRA master plan.
Did we run out of time tonight?
That's, no, no, no. It was, it's gonna be about an hour, hour and a half for each.
Yeah, if all the fixtures were out, it's probably something to break or fuse. They had that box that's still in the air. That's got fuses and balance and stuff.
So something in there. Yeah.
There was one lamp out and that was gonna be the lamp. I think there's three on that pole, two or three.
I'm telling you, this works for being used.
Okay, there we go, that's on a Monday.
It's good here. Yeah.
Okay. I can be there at the city council meeting that night, so we're gonna need it.
And then Friday.
I have, okay, so that's, you know, my, my dates are all screwed up.
Yes, we got to the, to the, um, to Sunday morning and it was packed out there.
Maybe else, but the blended lines, that was a good idea.
We have, uh, great ideas.
We're the truth people.
I'll just delete it.
But you know, they're sitting there not being used. Hell, no, it's being used. It's supposed to be.
It is dual use.
The 24th and 30th. Anytime you put something or take something.
I'm all.
This city helps them a long time.
All right, so what, uh, uh, what is it? It's a workshop.
It's a workshop.
CRA workshop.
CRA, uh, master plan and. The function master. Okay, yeah, we'll get it there. Yep, you're welcome. As a part of their.
I do too. I, that's what I told Billy, I called him, you know, I, I start looking at, I start looking at the, at the agenda, you know, they're preparing. And I called him up and I go, dude.
All of our stuff, that's why we're down here.
In Tampa, there's no way I get here by Friday.
I just didn't even, I didn't even have it.
But I'm glad they didn't get everything done because the parks master plan and the CRA master plan, those are big. And they, I was, they would've been rushing through it here, so. So we'll do that on the workshop, you heard that, right? We're gonna have a workshop.
March 17th.
Mm-hmm. There goes my plans for the St. Patrick's Day party, just kidding. Like, that's gonna happen.
Exactly. Oh, wow.
Seventeen days, I can't.
Seventeen, when is that? And March 15th?
No, February 10th.
Oh, nice.
Like, two weeks, we leave and then we're going to, to Egypt and down to Aswan and the Black Door, then to Jordan to see Petra and Bodigram and then back.
Oh, nice, what a great trip.
Good to see you.
Feeling better?
Good.
Okay. Thank you, Garcia. Okay. Okay. Just be there day 30. That's a week from Saturday. That's a week from this Saturday. This Saturday, at noon, right?
It was even, or spot.
Right in the brew, right? Okay, very good.
Well, I get one.
Okay, very good. I plan on attending. Okay, yeah, okay, thank you.
Okay, I'll explain that, thank you. I appreciate it.
I'm assuming that's what her complaint is.
It must be.
Yeah. I mean, but. The range isn't anything that I picked up.
The CRA workshop is a lot.
And the 17th, yeah, that's awesome.
I, I.
Now, I got my dates, my dates screwed up here. Give me a little.
St. Patrick's Day.
But it, I wasn't like, hey, I'm not, but I did mention it. I tried.
And the, and the council, the council meeting that was gonna be on the legislative days is moved to what? There it is.
It came into the shop.
Yeah. All right, let's see what we got here.
I, uh.
That is true. Hey, we can go afterwards. May need it after.
Unfortunately, I already reviewed the, uh.
Okay. Okay, I'd like to call the order to the, uh, city council meeting in Zephyr Hills. It's Monday, January 27th, 2025. It is 6:08 PM. Ricardo, can we have the roll call, please?
Yes, sir.
Here.
Charles Proctor. Lance Smith.
Here.
Jody Wilkinson.
Here.
Steven Spina.
Here.
Mayor Munson.
Here.
William Poe.
Here.
Matthew Magger.
Matthew Magger.
Here.
Okay, and we're gonna start off an invocation. The invocation can be given by Pastor Ken Ringhausen at this time and it will be filed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Is that a short joke? It's a short joke.
Pastor Ken, hi, David.
Pray with me. Father, we come before you in the name of Jesus Christ and we lift up this community. We lift up this board. We lift up this nation to you. We need you every single day. I pray for guidance for every single commissioner and the youth council and the mayor. But I pray that Jesus Christ will be glorified in this community. We pray these things in his name. Amen. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor Ken, and good to see you again. I'd like to welcome everybody to the meeting tonight and ask if you could silence your cell phones at this time. First part of our meeting is time for citizens' comments. And if you have any comments, it's gonna be, uh, you'll have three minutes to make those comments. And when you come up to, for your comments, you need to state your name and your address for the record, please. So at this time, I'm gonna ask the city clerk if we have anybody signed up.
Yes, we have Vicki Wiggins signed up.
Okay.
I think I made it official this time. Vicki Wiggins, uh, 38550 Fifth Avenue here in Zephyr Hills. And I just wanted to remind you all that our VIP party is the. And that is for all of our sponsors and our volunteers, of which some of, all of you are part of our sponsors and some of you are volunteers. So that will be held at Zephyr Hills Brewing on Saturday, 12 to 2. And we have food being catered by Golden Corral. I swear I'm not touching it. Food's catered by Golden Corral, so we would ask for an RSVP. It's you and a guest. So if you would just shoot me a quick email or a text and let me know if you're coming, we would love to have you. Polly is coming and he's gonna bring his band, so we'll have some entertainment. And then afterwards, you can go out in the street and enjoy the fancy flea. So, and then of course, Pigs is only 12 short days from now. And that's gonna be good weather. We've ordered it. We want it. We deserve it after all these years. So, um, February 8th, put that on your calendar too. And I also just wanted to circle back to CRA comment. The Chamber loves, loves, loves the mural and we loved working with CRA Main Street to make that happen. So we just appreciate it and, um, you know. I want to thank you, but I know that it wasn't you guys doing that, so, but we do appreciate it. And, and we've already had several folks stop and get pictures with it. So it's a really beautiful thing and I think it's a great addition to downtown. So, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Vicki.
Thank you, Vicki. Ricardo, is anybody else signed up?
Not for citizen's comments. I have someone interested in speaking later, though, during the agenda.
During one of the agenda items? Okay. Does anybody wish to speak, have any comments at this time? All right, seeing none then, I will move on to the mayor's portion of the meeting.
All right, um, we have First Presbyterian Church gonna come up.
Thanks for letting us come. I'm Denise Lam, the pastor at First Presbyterian Church. And we're at 5510 19th Street, in case you didn't know. And I thought you could use a moment of positivity. And you may or may not be aware that we have a pretty good sized food ministry here in Zephyr Hills. Last year, we served over 27,000 meals.
Wow.
Free meals in our community. And so, um, we want to thank somebody who helped make that possible and that is Mayor Melanie Monson. And we have a certificate for her. After the pandemic, things got kinda crazy around Zephyr Hills, which you all are well aware of. And Mayor Melanie just called us one day and said, I have some stuff for you. She brought us cleaning kits for people who had flooding in their homes and needed to do some cleanups. She had toiletry kits and canned goods and other things for us. And then a couple of weeks later, called us again and offered us, I, I don't even know how many thousands of pounds of food you gave away that day. But, um, donated so many thousands of pounds of food, not just to us, but other food programs in our community. So we have a little certificate of appreciation. And it says, thank you for your tireless efforts, your unwavering support and your dedication, your hard work and commitment are truly appreciated because you truly care about this Zephyr Hills community and we thank you so much.
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you. I didn't expect that, but thank you. And what a blessing to be able to help and be able to, be able to help. For, we helped 14 food banks. And that was a huge, huge thing that we were able to do, so thank you for that. I appreciate it. Next, we have the photo contest winners. Is Kevin doing that?
Mayor, um, just to clarify, that wasn't actually the city that gifted all that food. It was the LDS church, right?
So, yes, I reached out to, um, the LDS church and, um, partners are around and, and they did gift all the food. And then we got volunteers from all around the community come to help, all the way from Wesley Chapel, all the way in. We had lots of people helping to hand out all this food, so what a blessing.
All right, Kevin Weiss, City of Zephyr Hills Public Information Officer. Uh, I was actually supposed to be in grad school class today, but it got canceled, so I'm here. Today, we'd like to formally recognize the winners of the 2025 photo contest. Um, we had three amazing photos to choose from and vote upon. We ultimately received 32 entries from the community. And, um, I'll tell you, the, the voting process, uh, it was you all, the, well, the, the city staff went through the 32 photos and ultimately picked three for you all to vote on. And, um, the rankings came back very narrow. Uh, every picture was separated by one vote. So it just shows you the, um, the tightness factor of, um, how good the photos were in making a decision there. So without further ado, um, I'd like to introduce the third place winner, uh, which is Amy Sample, if Amy is here. All right?
Any questions about, uh, what inspired you to take the photo?
I just, um, I felt that it encompassed kind of everything. The bus system that is wonderful and helps everybody transportate. It shows our beautiful downtown. Um, and I was actually very blessed to catch that exact moment right there.
Yeah, that's amazing.
Some of the best photos are, are just accidents. That was beautiful. Good job.
That's great.
All right, and then moving on to second place, we have Jose Rosado Delgado.
What inspired you for this photo?
Yes, uh, that was the day of the parade. Uh, I was parking, um, next to it and I saw the mural, like, uh, this is beautiful, so I took the pictures. So, please love it.
Thank you. Great job. Welcome.
And then, uh, our first place winner is Debbie Kring, who took a photo in front of our brand new mural or the brand new mural, uh, right beside the chamber building or on the chamber building, I should say. Um, so Debbie, if you're here, awesome.
Well, that's my daughter, my 14-year-old daughter. She's a ballerina at Blackwood Studios. She's very talented and she's won a lot of, um, dance competitions, as you can see, and, um, we make a good team. We were driving around Zephyr Hills one day and she was like, oh my gosh, stop that mural. It's brand new. Um, so we stopped and, um, took about, I don't know, 500 photos in front of the mural.
Yeah, yeah.
Her different leotards and, um, different poses and everything, but anyway, just the town and my daughter.
Oh, beautiful. Thank you.
And then we'll, we'll get a group photo at the end, um, real quickly, but just want to note that this photo has been submitted to the FCCMA as part of their statewide contest and I believe voting opens up today. I'll have to check the link, so encourage everybody. Okay, so.
I put my vote in.
All right, so we all have to do.
Yeah.
We'll put it out on social media to encourage, uh, the public to vote for this photo as well. So, and if that, um, ultimately earns enough votes compared to other, uh, cities and counties, then that would be, uh, placed on the front of their directory. And, um, I believe some social media love as well from the FCCMA, so. Any questions?
They'll send us that link.
Yes.
Can you ask the three to come up and let's get pictures?
Yes.
Right.
Yeah, so if you all three want to come up, we'll do a quick photo and then you all can be on your way as well. You don't have to stay for the whole meeting.
I don't blame you. I, I mean, good idea.
Have you come up?
Then you have to just.
We'll move this thing out of the way. There you go. Ken was trying to get out of the picture. Looks like she's part of the photograph, doesn't it?
Yeah, very good. Thank you.
Emotion, like emotion in everything, emotion in the thing. That looks great.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you. And my last thing is, um, I wanted to have our youth council come up. They're going to introduce themselves to you and tell you a little bit about them. This is your new youth council. Matthew, you'll go to the speaker first. Matthew's our chair. And, um, then once, once they introduce themselves to you and tell you a little bit about themselves and what school they're in, then Nikoa is going to introduce our first project and ask for your support in our first project, so.
All right, um, good evening, everybody. Um, my name is Matthew Goldfarb and I am the, um, chairman for the mayor's youth council. I've been, uh, in the meetings for about, what is it? About four months? And it's been one of the greatest blessings I've ever had. Being able to work alongside Mayor Melanie and all of my amazing, um, chair, chair members have been like some of the greatest like experiences that I've had so far. I can really see how far it's gonna take our community and the, and not only my leadership experience, but also other peoples. Um, I'm, I currently attend Zephyr Hills High School and I'm a junior. One interesting thing about me is I'm in the, uh, Zephyr Hills JRTC and I'm currently a company commander, hoping to become battalion commander. I plan on attending the University of Florida for a veterinary degree and eventually going to the military. But my, one of my greatest passions is just helping out my community because you guys have done so much for me uh, with Mayor Melanie and also all of you to make it possible. It's just been great, but I'm gonna hand it off to, um, my vice chairman, uh, Mahi.
Hello. Hello, my name is Mahi Nuka. I am the mayor's youth council vice chairman. And I am very excited to have this opportunity to be standing here before you today. I'm a junior in high school and my life has already been a lot about service. I volunteer at Adnan Health. President and founder of Red Cross at my school. And so a lot of, a lot of my life revolves around helping others, but I've never been in a position where I can do it so well. And I'm really grateful to all of you and especially to Mayor Melanie to have this opportunity. Thank you.
Wow, I don't fault that. Um, hello, my name is Haley Dester. I'm a freshman at the Academy of Spectrum Diversity. I also cannot express how grateful I am to be a part of this, um, initiative in this community. It means so much to me. And I want to thank you guys for being a part of it as well.
Thank you.
Well, hello, I am Nikoa Riles. I am a student at FLV, well, yeah, at FLVS. I am so happy to be a part of this. I know the Zephyr Hills community has been, my family has been, and it's happy to continue on the generation of helping the community and grow. And also, uh, I, um, am looking at attending Duke University or MIT, so.
Hello, everyone. My name's Brody Bishop and I am a member of the mayor's youth council and it is such an honor to serve as a member of the mayor's youth council. And I would like to thank everybody here for giving me this opportunity to be a member. And I, and I hope that my contributions shall help me make this community a better place. Thank you very much.
I'm Janelle Lewis. I'm a student. I'm a freshman student at Zephyr Hills High School. And this council is such a blessing. So I want to thank you all for giving me this opportunity.
Thank you.
My name, my name is Noah Ringhausen. Ignore the shirt, it's wrong. I'm a freshman at Kirkland Academy of Innovation. And, uh, I've only been to two of these meetings so far, but it seems like a really, really good thing to do. From, from what I've heard so far, we've already done pretty cool things for Zephyr Hills. Um, at Kirkland, I'm in electricity and automotive program, so I'm the real get, get the job done guy. And, uh, yeah, I just, it's a pretty cool thing to do. I've, I've also been to Tallahassee two years in a row for the page messenger program. I'm going next year to be a messenger for, um, Senator Danny Burgess. And, uh, yeah, I get to run papers around for important people.
Hey, that's great.
Hi, my name is Catherine Cho. Uh, I'm a freshman at Kirkland Ranch. Kirkland, yeah, Kirkland Ranch. And, um, I just want to thank you guys for like helping us out and like all that you guys do and. Yeah, that's really y'all. Thank you.
Glad to have you on board.
My name is Lydia Ragstil. I am homeschool. I go to Victory Baptist Church. I'm glad to be able to be here and be able to help out.
I was, I was, when we're done, they're gonna introduce their program and then I'm hoping you guys will come up and we can get a picture with you with the youth council. So, um, Nikoa is going to introduce their first project. So we've set up the group to where they will do projects throughout the year, not just volunteer pro, things, but projects to make the community better. And I have to tell you, when, when they, we opened it up and the ideas started flowing, I, I think all of our mentors, we, uh, we'll introduce our community mentors. We were all in shock when we heard the things that they were already planning to do. So to tie into their first one was very hard, but they did, um, zoom in on one and Nikoa is taking lead on this one. And so she's gonna introduce that to you and ask for your support.
Well, hello again. Um, so today I am intro, well, not I, but we are all introducing the positive message project. And this project is, next slide, please.
Next slide?
Oh, sorry.
He's trying. There you go.
So this is the agenda so far. First slide will be the introduction and the overall of what the project is and how things would be run, pretty much. Second is the location of the schools throughout Zephyr Hills. Third is the team ups and fourth are the public on how they could participate as well. Fifth is the location of the facilities and six will be our way of advertisement. So the overall introduction is Zephyr Hills community, as we have seen through the photo competition that just happened, thrives on creativity and positivity as well. The youth council, we are now proud to present the Positive Message Project, which is designed to inspire and motivate uplifting spirits throughout the community and also through groups that kinda, I wouldn't say get left out, but not a lot of people kind of think about them, which would be mainly the nursing homes, hospice, hospitals, assisted living facilities and even our brave troops who are serving our nation. And, uh, next slide. With that, we will be having two ways of that. First, we'll be having schools participating, which are the zonings, two schools per one. First, we'll be having schools participating, which are the zonings, two schools per one, except for Zone E, which we will be having the students make the cards. And we have emailed out to the schools already, the way of organizing, which they are given a link to a Google form on how to count the cards. Now, with that, we will be bringing boxes to each school, but each school will have their own location on where all the cards can go. So that is all up to them.
So just to, just to add to that, so they're going to ask each class to make cards. To note, make notes for those folks that are homebound or whatever, right?
These will be the teams for picking up and also mainly, yeah, just being involved with each school and also with the facilities as well. So Zone A will be me and Noah, B, Zone B will be Matthew and Janelle, Zone C, me and Catherine, Zone D, Brody and Haley, and Zone E is Lydia and Mahi. Now, the zonings are up to each member on how things would be run type, but.
Right.
Now, for the public, the second way for the public would be, to participate would be them to make the cards as the way they please. And then they would be able to drop them off at these three locations. I did forget to add on for also either here at the city hall or at the library as well. Because I know you guys do events, you host them, like with the garden club and all. So they can do the cards there and the, drop them off at the boxes. I have spoke to three, both of the, all of the owners and they have approved of it. And these are the location of the facilities. Now, I have called all of them, but I haven't gotten a word from most of them so far. I might have to, I don't know if I might, but I don't know if they want to participate as well and go up and talk to the event planner at these places. But these are so far the places throughout Zephyr Hills. And Moffitt is still up in the air. I know I have a meeting soon with them to talk things over with. So now for advertisement on how to get word around, we have two options, because I know the third option is free and who doesn't love free? So, first one would be posters or flyers. We'd be having them up at each school and maybe depending on it, throughout the public at public places where it would be known and it could get word of mouth around. Second would be the social media, which would be posted, everybody can repost, well, it would be posted through the city of Zephyr Hills' Instagram or any social media, but reposts to help spread it more. And example of cards would be these, and that's so far all I have.
So they're going to start working, they've just barely started this project. It's going to go on for about six weeks. And so they're, we're trying to get, we did email all the schools, we haven't had any response yet, but we'll, you know how that goes, we'll get it, we'll get them to respond. And we're hoping that you guys in your groups, in your church groups, in your, maybe some of your Rotary Clubs and those, they might jump on board and put word out. And that's our hope, is to be able to have enough cards where whenever somebody's having a bad day, the activity director will have a card throughout the year to be able to hand out to residents. Because you know, and this is one of the things that they brought up, is that many of the residents don't get visits when they're in a nursing home and somewhat, you know, and, and they just need an uplifting. So I'm very proud of them and I'm excited for this first project for them. So any questions?
Well, Mayor, I want to say first of all that I'm excited for you because you've been trying to get this off the ground for a while. You finally got a good group there. And I was there that first night, I remember, and I said a few things, few words just to get, kind of kick it off, and they were, you could tell they were very nervous and everything, but I can see they're already starting to work as a group. So you've done a good job just in a few short months that that's going on. So congratulations to you guys. And I think in our CRA meeting, we might have come up for another project for you too, so.
Yes.
But work on this one first and we, that could come down later. Go ahead.
If I might, well, first of all, I'd like to congratulate all of you because this is a great opportunity to learn to speak in public, no matter how uncomfortable you are. You're among friends here and we're very proud of you and glad that you have earned this wonderful opportunity through our mayor. Secondly, I wanted to encourage you, we have a terrific Meals on Wheels program here and often those folks who are delivering meals are delivering meals to people who, that might be the only person they see that day. And so that's a great resource if the, if the, if the volunteers have a stack of cards that they can give out to.
Great idea.
Folks that are coming. And then I would like to welcome you also, if you'd like to come speak to our Rotary Club, it meets at 7:00 AM, which may not work for some of you who have to be at school, but you can contact me at my email address on the city website. Okay, thank you.
Our Rotary Club meets at noon, so if you want to come to that more reasonable hour, email me and we can set some up.
They have to go to school.
But how are you funding things?
So we do have a small budget and this one is really not going to cost us anything. We are hoping for the schools, we wanted to give a plaque for, you know, each school that, the class that did the most and just have a plaque made for them. But we do have a small fund that's, that was put in. The city budget, yes.
Just want to make sure.
And, and they are excited, they know next year they'll be going, we're going to have them go to Tallahassee with us next year. This, this one, we're hoping with Billy's help that we'll get them to go to our conference in August. So they can meet other youth groups and be able to collaborate with them. So that's our goal, since that's in Orlando and easy to get to, so we're trying to work that out. So they're excited. When I told them that we're going to get to go to Tallahassee, they were way excited about this. This is a great opportunity. And as you know, you know, some, it's going to, it's a little scary. And look at them shine, this is, this is amazing. So I'm proud of them already and we just barely began, so.
Well, first of all, I'd like to thank you all. It's great to see that the future of Zephyr Hills is in good hands. I was able to meet some of you during the parade and y'all worked so hard handing out the, what was we handing out?
Like the little brackets.
Yeah. I ate this for a week. But I'm, I'm just so excited to see the future of Zephyr Hills and to know that we're in great hands. Thank you all for coming.
Thank you. All right. We're going to, we're going to have you guys come up too and get a picture and then we're going to go. So I also, we do have community mentors. So we've set this up a little bit different to where we have community mentors that are helping too. So Dr. Stovall, we have, Sam Aberhany is here, he's a community mentor. We have Rodney, he's, he's our, our staff mentor. And Antoine is our, another community mentor. And also Ivan's sick today. Ivan's part of the chamber and he, so we have some great community mentors that are working hand in hand with them, so. All right, let's do it. Kevin will tell us where to go.
Is this in the way? Need that moved, you good?
All right.
You all got to look happier than that.
All right, one, two, three. Okay, one more.
You got this, thank you.
All right, one, two, three.
Aren't you one of us, come with us?
There are six items tonight. We can vote on them in their entirety or any council member may pull some for further discussion.
In opposition, I move that we approve all of the consent agenda.
Second.
And Mr. President, I would like to just note one and I appreciate the metal wood pump. I, I went out there with Shane and Rob and it's, it's much needed and I appreciate the way they're doing it, because it's going to be similar to one of the lift stations, it's going to be operating like that. So what they were doing is makes a lot of sense, it's going to help the flooding issues out there. So, thank you.
I can add to that real quick. We did modify the agreement to add 180-day completion date, 180 days from notice to proceed.
Is it a permanent solution, so you, you're not hauling back?
Correct.
Great, good news.
Okay, I have a motion and a second to approve all six consent agenda items. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion passed unanimously. I'm moving out to the Planning Director's report and I will turn it over to Todd.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, Todd Vanderburg, Planning Director. Just have one item under the Planning Department this evening. It's a visioning workshop, a summary update that we wanted to come and present to you this evening. As you recollect, on the 13th of this month, we had a joint workshop that we got together with you folks, the Planning Commission, a few property owners and city staff and had a, had a visioning workshop. Council had asked staff to conduct the workshops, to specifically look at the north 301 area, starting at Kosick Road and up to Terabella, both sides of 301. Part of the prompting of that workshop, as you know, had to do with some petitions that were submitted for two hotels on the north end of the city, on the east side of 301, across from Terabella. Request was for a rezoning and a conditional use. Well, we'll get into that a little bit in the discussion. I think y'all are aware of that already though, but, but we took the direction from the city council, worked very hard, put a lot of information together. I'd like to thank Tammy, I'll introduce her in a minute, but within a couple of weeks, we put together a lot of information. I hope you've had the opportunity to take a look at it and review it and we'll be talking a little bit about that tonight. We want to share a summary of the visioning comments. We, at the visioning workshop, we broke the attendees into three work groups, we put everyone to work and looked at that study area. And I think we came up with a lot of very good input and comments at the meeting. I think everyone was very engaged, worked out very well. So we appreciate everybody's involvement. And we've also had, had that exercise get together and part of that, main purpose of that was to, to get that feedback and input from the, the attendees to, to help us with the beginnings of looking at that area. We, we've summarized those comments, we've provided those to you and we, we have, Tammy and I worked on developing a concept rendering for that area. We'll share that with you this evening. And we've come up with an idea for a new future land use category, an underlying PUD zoning. And we'll, we'll get more into the, in depth on that in a minute. And then tonight, what we'll finish with is trying to, for staff to get some consensus on those petitions that I mentioned earlier. I'll also state, we, we do have David Warnaker, Len Johnson and Phyllis Purvis, they are online, perhaps after we make our presentation, however you're comfortable with bringing them into the discussion. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Tammy Veranna and we've got a PowerPoint to share with you.
Thanks, Todd. Good evening, everyone. Tammy Veranna, Veranna Consulting, Safety Harbor, Florida. Todd, you did a great overview, so I think I can skip through some of my slides in the very beginning anyway. And I can let you know, right? So, okay, so the overview, Todd went through this. Essentially, we're going to look at those workshop results, we're going to look at some recommendations and then ask for some guidance. The purpose of that workshop on February 13 was to assess existing conditions in a planning area. We looked at some relevant, some planning principles and some development examples. And then council and the Planning Commission set out to envision desirable development in the planning area. And then we looked at the end for how those ideas may come together. Okay, so next slide, please. So this, just as a refresher, this is the planning area that's outlined in green and the particular focus of the work, visioning workshop was the areas that are shown in yellow. And those are undeveloped properties that are along the US 301 corridor that have a more of a probability of change in the near future, near to midterm. We looked at these planning principles, I won't go through them, but these were what the guidance that we gave as you all set forth to do your, your visioning. Next, please. So this is a picture of everyone at work at their, at their group table, envisioning how the, how future development can best support the needs of the growing Zephyr Hills community. And the next slide is the report out. So what are our ideas for shaping the future of the planning area? So each, each table picked a representative and reported out on their group's ideas. There's some tabletop maps and markers and ribbons and different things that they, Legos that people could use to articulate their ideas. Next, please. So in the consensus vision, which is in your summary report, and I summarized the summary report, and I'll go through these four different categories. First was desired land uses in the planning area and particularly those focus areas. So it would be mixed use development along US 301 and that would include retail, office, hotel, and there was a specific request for no residential. Those uses would avoid high-traffic generators, such as your more intensive commercial uses, of course, industrial uses. And it would be more so in favor of neighborhood-oriented uses, those sort of places that could provide for, you know, kind of routine daily needs, often in a walk-up environment. Then there was a discussion about a village concept or a neighborhood activity hub, looking at the, a node within this planning area that would be more intense with more activities and uses at the highest point, tapering out to the residential areas and then to the rural countryside to kind of create a feathered approach into the, the rural setting. There was an idea that we start with the hotels that Todd had referenced before regarding the conditional use and rezoning and to make this area more of a neighborhood, with a neighborhood center, with an access to a range of activities, not only shopping, but also recreational concerts, civic activities and whatnot. And then there would be a walkable and a bikeable design. Next slide, please. As for street connectivity, there is a, there was a desire for a street network to be developed in conjunction with development of this overall area. There was lines on the map drawn for some backage streets, so, and we'll, I'll point to those in a little bit. So those would be parallel to US 301, so it would provide additional circulation opportunities so not everybody had to get on and off of 301 for everything that they do. so not everybody had to get on and off of 301 for everything that they do. There were some ideas for street extensions, for some new streets, a walking and biking path, intersection upgrades and limiting cuts to US 301. And then a big idea that came out of this was the idea of a new park, a regional park, that there isn't a park like that in the northern part of the city, that you could leverage the existing rolling topography, the floodplain at the South-Southern Port and green space to really make a very nice recreational asset. And then also utilizing those same features for stormwater management capabilities in the way of either a stormwater park or even a regional stormwater facility that could handle some of the stormwater from the development sites, leaving more of their land for development and less for the retention purposes. And then having a logical location, you know, this has got a lot of new single-family townhouse development, there's manufactured home sites that are in this particular area, and then there was a proposed assisted living facility that may also come back at some point in time. And those would also be very, they would benefit a lot from having a nearby park. So next, please. So I found this, I was reading on my LinkedIn or something, and so that's why it's like a little screen grab, but this was the 2024 National Association of Home Builders about what home buyers really want. And look at those top six: near retail space, park area, walking jogging trail, a walkable community, typically suburban, whatever that means, and then a lake. I mean, those are just the top, but you know, I think that those features are all embodied in the vision consensus that you all came up with that evening and the Planning Commission, of course. Next, please. So this is the sort of a concept plan illustration of the vision concept. So what we did was we took your ideas and kind of merged them into a map. There was a little bit of difference relative to maybe where that park would be, but of course, this is just conceptual. You know, you're going to have to look at opportunities for what properties come available for a park and then, of course, this is not a policy map, it's just an illustration. So what we can see, and this is blown up over here, so I can look over here and help myself out a little bit, is that you see the pink purple area as mixed use, which is the American Planning Association color for a mixed-use land use category. And on top of that, we've put some of the ideas. So the hotels at the very top to the west of, excuse me, the east of US 301, and that would be the conditional use property that Todd talked about earlier. You can see at the very bottom, there's the assisted living facility that, you know, that could be in that location. And then I think we see road network. So the road network that you see there is mostly your ideas. We did add a few more here and there just to kind of create some connectivity based on the block sizes you see over here. So in your downtown, you have 300 by 300 blocks, I believe it is. The vision plan that was done for North 301 was saying nothing larger than 500, so I kind of moved those blocks around and just added streets where it looked like it made sense. But of course, these are not set in stone, they're just for illustration purposes only. And then you can see the big concentric circles around. The purple inward circle is a quarter-mile area, so it's from the center out to the edge would be a comfortable five-minute walk and then the blue one around the edge would be a comfortable 10-minute walk. So you could see that if you were down at the park area, you could very easily walk up to the hotel area so somebody could go visit their relatives that are staying at the hotel, the hotel patrons could also utilize the park without having to get into their car and drive. You'll see on the backside of the hotel site is a baggage street. There was also the idea that the baggage street would be along the Dairy Road Extension. So again, just some concepts to think about. And then in that area, you'll see a green line behind that and that would indicate a multimodal, sort of an urban greenway type of facility, could be shared use with that baggage street or just the street, could be separate, you know, just depending on what the conditions support in that area. So we'll go to the next. So then we came up with some recommendations. So if we're going to look at those land use limitations or, you know, subtle land uses and also for mixed use in that area, we had two different things that we needed to address. First, you have an active case for the hotel sites, which is being processed right now and so you don't necessarily want to like get into a big planning process and let that, make that property owner spend a long time. So city staff would continue to work with city council to look at that rezoning and conditional use request, perhaps incorporating some of those vision consensus ideas and then putting conditions of approval to make it more context-sensitive as appropriate. And then for the remainder of the area and including the hotel site, you could do and create a brand-new land use category that was tailored to this site. You could initiate a city-initiated future land use map amendment to apply that new category and then that new category would require that any future rezonings in the area be planned unit development and we'll talk more about that in a second. So that's in a nutshell. Next, please. So just kind of drawing from the community vision, there were two different areas with character areas that were in this planning area. There was Zephyr Vale and Zephyr Moore. So we picked Zephyr Vale. We thought maybe this land use category could be called Zephyr Vale, but it can be called whatever you'd like. We just, we started there. So, next, please. So the new Zephyr Vale future land use category would have a set of primary uses and a set of secondary uses. So the things that you would expect, retail, and retail includes restaurants, so it's kind of a broad category, retail, office, hotel, and then civic uses such as your parkland. And then for residential, that would be secondary. Assisted living could probably be in either category, but I put it over there because it is a residential use. Perhaps some lib work units within the area and then if there was any residential, and I know that there was a desire for not having any residential, maybe in a vertical orientation, you could have, you know, businesses below or on the second floor and then you could have residences above. But again, this would be on a planned unit development basis, so each site would be considered, you know, based on where it's located, how big it is, you know, what it's next to, what its topography is and those sorts of things. It would require a planned unit development zoning and then we'd have these tailored considerations for the PUD. Next, please. So there's a long list within the example that Todd provided to you of things that, sort of like a checklist of things that you would think about and how the site development plan was addressing these things that would help it to be, become that sort of neighborhood hub, walkable, bikeable environment. Next, please. So for the floor area ratio, which is how we typically measure non-residential uses and that we proposed a 1.0 FAR. For the dwelling units, it would be up to 14 dwelling units per acre and then their impervious surface area, which is in your existing regulations, is 80%. But I think these are all, you know, we just put this together, so we need more time to think about it, but this is a starting point. What I will point out is that for mixed use development, we tend to look at that in terms of FAR even if it has residential in it. So we may want to look at, you know, if that needs to be a little bit higher so that you can incorporate dwelling units per acre. Like I said, there could be a lot of calibration done here, but just as a representation, you'll see that middle line shows a 1.0 floor area ratio. So you can see if you build on half of the lot, and this is, I'm not certain, I guess it doesn't matter what size the lot is, but if you built on half the lot, you could go up two stories. If you built on a quarter of the lot, you could go up four stories. And what that kind of shows you is that if you're stacking your development, then you're creating more opportunity for pervious surface, those types of green spaces, things that are replenishing your aquifer. I mean, there are some benefits to that, however, there's also compatibility issues. So those things have to also be negotiated. Yes?
If you do do that vertical, you still, where would the parking?
Well, the parking would need to be accommodated on your site somewhere. In some cases...
I mean, you could build on top of parking.
You could build on top of parking, exactly.
Which would eliminate, would really eliminate some of that.
And because you do have the topography out there, you know, you could do something. I'm not a designer, but that's, I've seen it done before. Any other questions before we move on to the next one?
I guess, so with this, it gives us some, you know, we can look at each project individually, kind of, I think you were kind of leading towards the same thing where we can, in other words, we're not going to just make one thing and this is what it's going to look like all across all of those different parcels. So we can look at them individually and see how it fits and what we're looking for on the individual basis.
Yeah, so it's context-sensitive essentially.
Okay.
And also, if you think about that density gradient that was discussed at the workshop, you know, maybe some places would be okay being a little taller and then you could feather out from there, but I think you need to think about, you know, what's the road network, what's it next to, what's the topography, what are the environmental conditions, and those things would all play a role in developing a site development plan and applying conditions of approval.
And I think the concept's pretty good. How do you accomplish it with different landowners like we have? In other words, I have a parcel and I want to do retail. We want to do the road network, I understand that part, but like SWIFT mode's going to require me to have a retentionary on my site to capture my, you know, my onsite retention. So, I mean, how does it work through when you have different landowners coming in?
Well, I think for the street, you know, you could have some sense of that you want some connectivity and, you know, if the road ends up here or it's a little down here, as long as it connects over here and there is a circulation potential. As far as the stormwater ponds, you know, if at some point in time there was that regional stormwater facility that was down at the south, you know, the water flows downhill, it could happen there, that might be a way where the stormwater could be accommodated there. In the interim, you know, it's just, you know, kind of looking at what's next door to you and what's already been developed and unless you do a master plan.
Right, right.
You could do a, like a conceptual master plan and do that in conjunction with the future land use category and it could be a guiding document or document policy.
Right, and when I look at this, I think more of the, what you said, the road network, thinking of the overall pedestrian network, the uses, but knowing that it's going to come in at different times.
Peace be.
Yeah, yeah. So, and the other thing, I mean, I think about it, you know, Phillips Road, we might not be able to connect across the Phillips Road because of the gradient, you know, we might not...
Right.
We might not be able to get a pedestrian across 301 without a death, you know, too.
No, we don't want that, so.
No, no.
But yeah, Todd had mentioned that there was quite a grade difference there that could be an obstacle or make it infeasible to do that there, so.
But I do like the way of trying, instead of just looking at each parcel, looking at it globally. I think that's a good thing to do.
So I think just to build on that, if we communicate effectively what our vision for that area is, then it helps guide the landowners and their prospective developers to this place where, you know, now we might get help with purchasing, you know, this parkland if, in fact, it can be used for retention. And so then there's this collaboration with the PUD. That's the advantage of the PUD is that we can create this collaboration with, and everyone knows that's the expectation coming in, so there's no one surprised by that, but it gets us where we need to be quicker, hopefully.
I think, ma'am, I think that when we, you know, talk about the PUD, that we put our standards that we want for this particular one. So I know that, and this is what has made us hesitant, because the PUD can go to a higher density, but we can restrict the density within that PUD.
You can restrict it in your land development or your comprehensive plan.
Right, so that we can say we can create this PUD, but we're not going to allow the higher, the 20 units per acre or, so we're going to have this Zephyr Vale land use and then underneath it we'll have the zoning.
Right.
And I had talked with Todd a little bit and I was thinking that, you know, for the things that you listed there, if we do some kind of combination of C1 and C2 that eliminates, you know, we don't want, and these aren't bad things, but we don't want them there. We don't want gas stations, we don't want car washes, we don't want storage units, we want what you had put up there, the office space and some shopping and retail and restaurants. So we can, that will kind of create a new zoning district that we can fine-tune what goes in there.
So what you do with a comprehensive plan and the future land use, it wouldn't be a big, long use table like you see in zoning. It would be more of the spirit of what you're looking for. During the planned unit development, you could say, you know, we already, maybe we have enough of this over here, we'd really like to, and somebody's coming forward with that and you're like, yes, let's build that into this planned unit development and let's design around that. So it gives you that ability to really get innovative or customize or tailor to that particular spot. But yeah, I think you would have sort of a light level of primary and secondary uses, the spirit of the future land use category, and then you would spend the time saying, well, and I think also it's important, if you absolutely do not want to have any residential, that, you know, we take residential off of the, you know, as a secondary use. But you might, at some point, there might be something that works out, you know, a live-work unit's kind of a nice thing if it's...
You had showed us the overlay, kind of the idea of that development out in North Point Village that had, you know, I'm not opposed to residential, but I don't want
Well, if you think about the North Point Village, it didn't have any residential in the front. It was the village, it was the hotels.
And that would be back towards where the townhomes and things are anyway.
That's correct.
So if you design it the way to where it's, it's even a buffer again, I guess.
I mean, you essentially have your residential already built in, but if there was an opportunity that somebody wanted to do a downtown retail street with residences up top, you know, isn't that, don't you have that in one of your developments?
That's right here, too.
Well, I know in your downtown, but isn't there some...
Yeah, we've got it.
Yeah, where you are, okay.
My question, too, is, okay, we have some users that are ready to roll. I mean, is it, and we really can't, the market can come and go very quickly. So if we have a user ready to go with something that we think's going to work, I don't want to tell them to wait for six months while we figure this out. We can't do that. We need to work them in as we go, I think, you know.
Well, I think what she was talking about there with the flexibility we have to kind of do that type of thing, and I think when we scheduled this workshop, we were, that was our intention was to try and make sure we can, if somebody's ready to go, that let's go ahead and get that overall picture like we're talking about and then work on a case-by-case basis almost.
But what we're saying is if somebody came in, which they, the hotel user's ready to roll right now, he can come in, apply, and we work him through the process.
Yeah, we kind of had a two-tiered, so we have this like short-term need that's already in process, it's active, but then there's these other things that you could spend a little bit more time. I don't think it takes a lot of time to do a future land use category, it's just getting the density, intensity, impervious surface and those uses. I think that list of things that are considerations, I did add, I think at the bottom, I don't know if it's the one you got, but I did add topography because I didn't have views and things like that, because I actually had used this in another, the community, but of course, they didn't have any hills. So, but that was added. So I think that really it's these things right here and the uses and then a sort of a descriptive, like what is this, what's the purpose and intent of this land use category, I think is important. So we did a little example, we kind of started, so maybe you could help us wordsmith that and make sure that it's, you know, hits all the marks.
If we do these, let's say we want to do these, like a lot of that property's own residential right now, or most of it is.
Let's go to the next one.
Oh, okay. There you go.
Are you?
So, how, what kind of process would it be for us to rezone all this? We have to do complaint amendment, rezoning?
So it would be a matter of whether or not the zoning was inconsistent with the land use category. And so I think that like what this is trying to show, these are the land use categories in the area. You've got residential urban along the east side and you've got mixed use on the west side. So let's go to the next one. Oh, did I, I thought I, one more, one more. Okay, so this is the parameters for the residential urban. So it's 7.5 to 14 dwelling units per acre, that's what it allows, which is essentially what is proposed within this Zephyr Vale and then up to a 14 dwelling. And then up to a .5 floor area ratio. And then there's a list of different types of zoning that would be applicable to that. So I think we'd need to look at, well, what is not, what's no longer on the table? I don't, I think that everything's still on the table, because if you do a little bit of residential, the floor area ratio would actually go up for those property owners. And, and then you just have to, you know, I, I think it's pretty compatible at this point. So let's go to the next one. The next is the mixed use category. I will point out that non-residential is a 1.0 floor area ratio, but I, for some reason I couldn't change on my computer. So it's a, that's, that is wrong. So it is also up to 14 dwelling units per acre, up to a 1 FAR and the same 80% impervious surface. So there's a lot of similarities between these two land use categories and the Zephyr Vale. But we'd have to like think it through, like what, what does the zoning look like? I think that the, the east side is R4, right? So it, but it doesn't, oh. Todd, do you want to speak to what the R4 and what's on the, the east side of US 301?
Yeah, the east side, I don't know if y'all recall, that was annexed in the city, signed a future land use, but the zoning was never filed through at the time. It was about the same time we were creating the North 301 Quarter Vision land use strategy, so discussions with the owners, they, they, they weren't sure what we were going to do. And they didn't know for sure themselves, so we said, well, we can maintain the county's zoning, so that, that's what's happened, so there under the current county.
If we go back to that slide where it shows all the yellow RU, right, there.
Yeah.
So that's what's currently existing.
That's correct.
And, but the, but one of the landowners that were in here recently said, you know, this should be commercial. This should be something other than RU.
Right.
And I think that the existing landowners might not be, they might not be, may not, may not object to that potential change of use.
I think what we're proposing is probably more along the lines of what they're thinking. Mixed use that allows more opportunities and the types and how their property could be developed, you know, with standards to, to make it more context sensitive that we talked about tonight.
What do you mean by mixed use really? I mean, you're talking about these merging commercial districts or residential and?
It's kind of like that North Point Village that we discussed earlier where, you know, that, that's a, I don't know, 14, 15 acre development, has a mixture of two hotels, it has a traditional main street with restaurants and offices. And then behind it you have some residential and all the way back you have Metler Toledo, light industrial manufacturing. So it, it's a, a good example, we felt, of the mixed use and that's why we wanted to.
It wouldn't go that far.
No, no, it, it's a different scale here, but you know, on the one slide, we, we showed a retail street where you could have, you know, if, if the hotels went in, you know, you got a, again, a transportation network that could come below that and skirt down below the townhome project and connect to Dairy Road and you could have kind of a little traditional main street uses like you saw in that North Point Village. Again, this is conceptual, visual, just some ideas that we've had. But with, with the, the new Zephyr Vale future land use category and the underlying PUD, you'd have a lot more flexibility how, how their property could be developed.
AF had, I, I, the planning commission had recommended approval of the, I guess, conditional use for the hotels.
That's correct.
AF had recommended denial.
That's correct.
Has with this idea, has staff changed their recommendation?
I think that's what we're looking for direction. I, I, I think from the staff level, I was aware, for example, the North Point Village and took our staff out there and we took some photos and thought if, you know, if we lean more towards the direction of some hotels in this location, if we could do a visioning exercise and, and come up with something that would be compatible to a mixed use development like the North Point, then I think we're more, more behind the project, you know. And then again, we can get into the, the conditions, grading, you know, elevations, screening, buffering, that, good transportation connectivity. Look at those types of elements that would kind of raise the bar, make it more context sensitive to the overall vision that we're beginning to develop and provide in this area.
Fourth point, a lot more, that whole area is a lot more urban than this area that we're talking about.
That, that's correct.
So that's where I'm a little nervous, I guess, about.
This would be the first project in that area, not, not including, of course, there's some activity planned at the northeast and northwest, corners of Kosick and 301, just beginning to review on those. And then, of course, the, on the east side, the ALF Memory Care Ward Unit, that got approved, but then they didn't file through. So we're not sure if that or when it's going to happen, but then yeah, that's all that's out there. Of course, not, not including the townhome project in the upper right hand corner there.
Property at the bottom, the south end, where the, really the, is very low and floods and that couldn't really be developed, could it? I mean, with.
No, I, I think we'd want to take a careful look at it. We got a good example now. I, I think it's still some flooding out there. So we know what, how that area floods and again, we thought, we've had in the comp plan, I think since 2010, we, we kind of need a, a north side city park. So we, we've looked at some different options and felt like perhaps this could, and that's why we kind of began that discussion of a, a north side city park, perhaps could be in this area and also accommodate stormwater, you know, as Tammy had mentioned. You know, if there was some collaboration with these property owners, probably that, that could be looked at. And of course, the timing, everything comes into play with that, the roadway network, there, there's a lot to it. But certainly we could have those discussions and at least have those to, to talk about it.
Could that be a thing where we would work with a developer and maybe, I mean, we don't own that property, so would we purchase some of it? Or would it be a deal with the developers or?
At this point, as of today, I think it would have to be a purchase because the, the, starting from Kosick Road moving up, the MU, the RU, RU are all privately owned, or excuse me, the, the MU and the RU are, I would say individually owned with no conversations of development. So if we wanted to purchase those, we'd have to go to the homeowner that's there. The RU is the assisted living facility. The, yeah, and so we would have to talk to the developer about the possibility of donation or purchase.
Because if we commit to purchasing some of it, I think we have a much stronger way of putting a lot of this into place if we're putting some skin in the game and we're going to help make the retention area happen and park happen and, you know, and then.
Right, it's an incentive.
Right, and we're doing it and, right, and then, then we say, you know, this is what we want. We can approve these things because we're looking at how we want this. I, I mean, I think this is a great concept.
And again, this is very early, put this together in two weeks.
Right, I know, but.
But we're asking to make a decision, try to, on that upper RU, the eight and a half acres on the hotel, some direction and consensus and, and we certainly, down the road, if, if that is moving forward, we, at the conditional use, we can look at conditions that you, you folks are comfortable with adding and share those and talk, talk those over with the city attorney and the, the, the property owners, developers and, and then we'll continue working on the new future land use map category. If y'all are in favor of that and the underlying zoning, the, the uses and everything we talked about tonight.
Todd, Todd, I have a question. The area that's purple, that's the area that floods a lot?
No, that's outside the city.
That, that bottom MU and.
Purple right here.
Oh, I'm looking at this.
This is the part that floods and that's right above, that's where it says.
Is there any development?
Into the RU.
RU is mostly where that water is, yes.
Is there any development there at all right now? Any homes or anything?
I think there's one home in that little parcel.
That white square or white rectangle, there's a, there's a home. If, if I can just correct what I said earlier, the first RU, the RU that's just north of the MU, that is where the assisted, excuse me, assisted living facility is slated to go.
That's correct.
And that's where the flooding is up there.
That whole property of the RU, the first RU piece?
Yes.
That is the assisted living facility. So for us to purchase, if we're looking at like the, the MU, it's the MU and then the second RU. So in between is where the assisted living facility is proposed.
Well, if that's a flood area, we should be able to get it pretty cheap, huh?
Well, and, and maybe they'd come back to the table if they knew that we were going to do a park and all that there too, because.
You never know, yeah.
It has to make work financially for them, but that's a nice incentive.
I was going to say that in the city of Newport Ritchie in their downtown, you know, they have a lot of coastal areas that they don't want to see develop. They actually added a little bonus to their down, some downtown properties. So if you take property, if somehow if you buy a credit for conservation lands or coastal lands, you could actually take that development intensity and bring it into where you, you know, it's a transfer development rights program essentially. So what they have is in their downtown, they have a maximum of 40 units per acre, but they're allowing you to go to 60 units per acre when you transfer some, so it's just kind of a way. There might be an opportunity where if you designate the whole area under this mixed use, everybody has the same entitlements, but you want to be able to bring some of those off of this undevelopable area, give some equity to that property owner. And then you could transfer it over. They could sell it to the city. I mean, there's a lot of different ways to handle that TDR program, but it's, it's a little bit more complicated, but it might, it might work in this particular case.
At MU, we could say, give us the east half and then we'll give you little cred, we'll give you more density or something or on the west part of it.
Yeah, if somebody wanted to do something a little bit more intense than the 1.0 FAR or whatever that ends up being, you might build in like, well, it could go up to 1.25, but you have to get that 2.5 from someplace. There has to be traded over. So, but I, I think, you know, when we go through and figure out what this, you know, have a better, a clearer idea of what this could look like, then we could think through some of those scenarios that we haven't had a chance to do.
Well, I think this is, I think what we did with. Ideas, develop this, but to a print from. Developing more in. See, there is.
Good, thank you. We appreciate that.
Are, are you still continuing on or?
I think I'm, I think.
About covered? Okay, cool. That's fine. We kind of, we kind of interrupted you, so I didn't know if you still had more.
I don't believe there's anything. Can you go forward? Oh, this, okay, let's go back to this one. This essentially shows the whole area in the pink because you would apply that land use category over the, and then of course, there's like a wetland there that I'm showing. And let's go to the next. We talked about this. Let's go to the next. Oh, questions?
Questions, we've already, we've already bombarded those.
So this is just next step, so this is where you provide direction to your staff as to what you'd like them to work on next.
Okay, and I think, you know, with the, what we did, like you said, with the planning commission and all, I think there's a general idea what we'd like and to, to what Councilwoman Wilkinson said, we need to let the, the owners know, this is what we're looking for. But I'd like the fact that we have the flexibility to do a lot of different things and, you know, just sort of some of the stuff you just brought up. So I think that's what the important part is, to make sure that we have that flexibility to look at each thing individually. With that said, then we also have, one of the property owners is kind of at the stage where we need to.
Make a decision.
Make a decision. So for right now though, I believe we're some, there's some, maybe some people online that want to speak to this.
Could I just say something real fast?
Yeah, go ahead.
So Dr. Stovall and I went across the county this last week out to Holiday and, you know, we passed by the North Point. I've been out there many a times at the PEDC building and stuff. And then we also saw some new development that was further down. And, you know, when we were looking at it, it's ideal. North Point, the reason that works there is because there is so much development around, so many houses. That type is not going to work in this area, right? As far as we're not going to get those higher end restaurants because people aren't, we don't have that many people going to lunch every day. Right, right, so.
It's very, very isolated.
Yes.
Can't walk.
Yes, and it's beautiful. But I love the concept of that and the look of it. But we stopped at another place further down the road and where on the street, it had the different levels and different architecture and, and really grading out front, so you didn't really know. And then it was in a U shape to where you had to go in one way and out the other. And we quickly could see how that would work in this type of areas. So I'm going to send you some of those pictures of that area too, because they, that was, you know, very well done out there. One of the better ones that the county's done.
Good, let's take a look at that one.
Okay. All right, we do have a few people online and we're going to give them a three minutes to make comments and then we can discuss further if we need to. So Ricardo, you have somebody?
Phyllis Purvis wanted to speak.
Okay, and you state your name and address and you'll have three minutes for your comments.
Hi, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
It's Phyllis. I wasn't able to be there in person tonight, but it, it seems like it's better than it was. Because what I was personally zoned was, you know, for four story apartments there and I'm sitting right at the top of the hill on the highway, so that was never a good fit. So I think retail, you know, commercial is a much better fit because I, I've said this before, you have, you know, one story, two stories tops, you know, so I, I just think, you know, that you really don't want housing up there on that, you know, four, five lane highway. But I appreciate your time and your effort. Thank you.
All right, well, thank you. Is there anybody else online that would like to speak to this? Okay, is there anybody here that would like to speak to this?
David Lund, do either of you want to speak?
I'll subordinate to death.
Are they on mute?
No, thank you.
I think somebody said, no, thank you. Okay, all right, great. So I guess the discussion we had was kind of hit on what they were looking for maybe. All right, so Todd, did you want to kind of wrap it up or see what?
Well, yeah, we, again, the petitions that we brought forth previously for the hotels, required a conditional use on the height and then the rezoning from the R4 currently to C1 neighborhood commercial. So, yeah, we're, we're just, you know, we, we got to a point during the planning report to council, we presented that. You guys suggested we do the vision workshop, we've done that. So I, I think you've heard tonight. I hope you understand kind of where we're at, where we're going to keep moving forward with the proposed future land use category and the underlying zoning and everything involved with that. If there's a consensus from the council at large to, for us to do that. And then the second, more, more immediate action is we're looking for consensus direction. The next step would be authorizing the city attorney to prepare the resolution for the conditional use and the ordinance for the rezoning. So, you know, if there's any general discussion, the rezoning probably is a little more straightforward. The conditional use, you know, if there's any standards or conditions that you want us to consider or discuss, you know, with the, with the applicant, the owner, then we can talk about that as well.
Hey, my, my only thing, and I'd said this from the very beginning, is, is it needs to be the right product. In other words, we know, and it was stated, I believe David even brought it up, that a city our size, we're, we're kind of way under hotel rooms that we should have. And so I think we're ready for it. It's up on the hill there. I know that, you know, that kind of creates a little bit of an issue there. But it's also, it's sort of that what we always thought of as in between Zephyr Hills and Dade City area anyways. But I just think we need the right product and I think that's my biggest thing is, you know, it was. it was a little bit of discussion last time about that, what we were talking about, the right product, a restaurant, a bar, something in those.
Well, I did converse with Lynn and David Warner here today both. And we had had prior discussions about the interest that had been brought up about meeting space and a restaurant to kind of up the bar, as you mentioned, and they can confirm they're both in agreement with those.
President, if I could also, the preservation of the mature trees that are closest to the, to the roadway at 301, I think that for me is very important and then, and minimize the excavation of, of the hilltop. If we can tier, you know, tier the, the parking or do something a little bit more creative than just cutting out the top of the hill. That would be my, my desire, yeah.
Yeah, we, I brought a couple of these items up, like, you know, preserving the, the trees. I think there's good opportunity in the northern end, probably 75% down. And then, you know, enhancing the screening, buffering, whatever's left to, to look at that. Yeah, could it be terraced? I, I floated that idea by, by Lynn and David. And, you know, it's kind of an engineering question. I don't know what that means. There could be some additional costs of that, but I know that was an idea that we had brought up. But, you know, could it be a terrace two level instead of all it just being flat? That's something we could talk to the engineer Cody about that topic certainly, and do that before any prior upcoming meetings.
President, and you know, we, we obviously do need a decent hotel. I mean, I'm not, I'm not saying we don't have one. We need, we need another one. We, and because we have the tennis center, we have different events that come up. So, I mean, if we can check as many boxes off as we can, even though maybe we don't get everything, I think we'd get somewhere where we want to be, you know? It's got the restaurants, it's got a meeting room, it's a, it's, you know, a nice name brand. You know, we desperately need it.
What, what are we rezoning it to?
Neighborhood commercials, that's C1. And it's a, hotel's a provisional use under the C1, so that just goes to the planning commission. But again, the rezoning, conditional use, where whatever standards we want, that'll all be coming back before you.
I don't want to throw another, is that kind of spot zoning where we're kind of, or?
With rezoning to C1, if it's certain size, we, we can do that. So it's, would be considered spot.
Oh, then we would consider rezoning the rest of this property. We're going to get, we're going to put this new district together and rezone that.
It's a PUD is what we're contemplating.
Right, PUD with conditions.
Right, with standards, FAR, ISR, you know, all that, yeah. Right, density, density.
The hotel, it's a conditional use also, so we would have the same, have the same, we could put the same restrictions on that as well, correct?
Yeah, yeah. I, I mean, that, that's, yeah, any ideas you all have that you want us to investigate and talk with the property owner and?
Councilwoman Wilkson said trying to keep nature of the hill, mature trees.
Yep, I've got those.
Certainly we keep roadway designations that we, you know, future roadway. So, but to a point, but we've got to watch out because we, there's a certain footprint that they need, you know?
Yeah, understood.
Work with the, to get as many of the.
Yeah, like that, that backage road, yeah, ideally you'd run that all the way up north, but yeah, we'll, we'll look at stuff like that, yeah.
Yeah, I think with that backage road, it would be huge for that. And then, of course, we know we're going to have to allow for some signage. We don't, we certainly don't want a 60-foot pole with a hotel sign on her, but.
Can't do pole signs no more.
Right, yeah, so we just want to make sure some, but we understand that that's going to have to be incorporated somewhere near the roadway. So, you know, there's going to be.
You know, ideas.
Theoretically, you'll see that when you come, I mean, either way, you're going to see the four-story hotel or whatever it is. They can have a sign on the building, right?
Rendrick showed that. That would be nice.
Like the Marietta.
And, all right. So you're going to start that process, I guess, for that project.
Be preparing a, a resolution for the conditional use, again, and an ordinance for the rezoning.
And how do we get started on the second part of?
Ellie Dale.
The Zephyr Vale and the zoning, the commercial zoning, designating really what? I guess we don't have to really create a new zoning district. We're just going to create a PUD with these things in it or without of it.
And I, without talking to Tammy, I think we haven't talked a lot about the next steps. We want to hear how you guys felt and if you're in concurrence with the direction we're going, we'll continue our discussions and probably come up with additional draft material. And I guess the next step is, once we have a draft that's prepared, we would generally take it through the, well, S B R C and then the planning commission and do a report back to the council like we do with any.
Now, Todd, what type?
Action.
I'm sorry, what, what type of timeframe are you looking at? Because, you know, I feel like it's not fair to hold the landowner up.
No, we're talking about for the interim moving, you know, proposing the idea, again, with direction from y'all, to move forward with the resolution and the ordinance for the rezoning, just on the hotel side at this point.
And that's what I think, because we don't have anything planned for, anything else.
Correct.
In.
The other would be the other.
Opening dialogue with those other landowners and talking about, here's our vision. How can you help us get there? Do you have anyone who's interested? What, you know, what, you know, starting to talk about, you know, we'd like to have a park in this area, that sort of thing. Maybe the developers can get together and help us get to that place with that, you know, that roadway that connects all the parcels together and, and leads, you know? So then those people who are living in the residential properties behind there can, can access and use those mixed use businesses.
Thank you, very valid point. And we, we held this vision workshop, but it was primarily with staff, planning commission, the council. We would want to open that up to the public, make sure all the property owners are aware of course what we're doing, notify them and probably obviously have that before we bring it to public hearing. So, yeah.
Thank you.
Well, I think we accomplished what we were intending to, going back to December meeting where, you know, we had the Form-based CO 301 corridor vision that hadn't been ratified with the county and all that. But we needed to do something in this area because the interest was already coming. So we had to move forward at the best we could. And so I think we accomplished exactly what we were trying to do, so. I appreciate everybody's work. Tammy, Tammy, a great job too.
We had some recent discussions with the county too, and I won't get into it tonight. They have some, some other ideas that they're looking along that corridor. So we need to be involved with that, of course, but we'll report back on that at a later date.
Anything else? We covered everything? Thoughts?
Eric, did you have anything? All right, thank you, Todd. Thank you, Tammy.
With the consensus.
All right. I'm lost here. City manager report, so we'll start with the, turn it over to.
Dr. Stovall. Todd's too tall. Hi, everybody. Randy Stovall with the Chamber of Commerce. And I really am happy to be able to talk about some work of a, of a great person, which is Stephen Neely, which is the consultant who did the project for us. A little bit about him, he's a professor at USF. He has a private company called Research Consultant Ford Analytics. And he, he did our original medical industry survey seven years ago, almost eight years ago now. And I think all of us would agree, a lot has changed in our community since that time. And so we hope that he would help us get a, kind of a view of how things have changed. And so that's really what we're kind of about here today with the medical folks. And he, he's got some national trends. I want to tell you what I gave you. The PowerPoint is designed to be sort of a summary of the whole report. So it, it, you know, it's not got all the data, but it gives you the high points. And so it makes it a little easier, I think, to go through the report, but it is a good comprehensive report. There's a copy of the survey that he used in the back of it, so you can have all those questions. We pretty much use the same questions that we used seven years ago, so we'd have comparable data. And, and he starts, he starts by saying, you know, healthcare is one of those industries that continues to grow. And I've got this number that impressed me. So since 19, in 1965, national healthcare spending was 6%. By 2022, it's 17%. By 2032, 20% of what people spend. That's tremendous growth in that particular segment. And we know that growth's happening. And what does that mean? It means that they also need more employees. And he has a, he has a number he pulled from his research that by 2025, which is here already, nationally, there's a need for 7,000 additional physicians. And a larger number, they didn't quote, but a larger number of all those other healthcare occupations. And, and that's true for us. And, and I think you all know that not only is Pasco County rapidly growing, but our part of Pasco County is growing faster than the other parts. So healthcare is today a big deal. It's going to be a bigger deal in the future. Our population continues to represent a relatively significant number of older people and we need more healthcare, right? So that, that's kind of the reason we're dealing with this issue. I will tell you, I will tell you that we would have loved to have had more actual survey respondents, but it's, it's just one of those hard segments to get to respond. I think they're all very, very busy. So, but we do have data and so it's, it's useful. And, and I want to just kind of go through what I have for the PowerPoint. I'm probably going to not do all of the slides. You can go ahead. I wasn't paying attention. The other direction. There you go. There you go. There you go. And keep going. Keep going. So that's, that's kind of a snapshot of who responded. But generally, that includes people that are at the healthcare providers, some of the small practice providers as well. Next, next one. And what, what we're going to talk about here is issues such as what kind of houses people are interested in, issues like what kind of amenities they, they may have a preference for and, and then what awareness they may have of the amenities that we already have. And so if, you go to the next one. So if you notice the very top of this, and we'll see this in the recommendations from Dr. Neely at the end, people are concerned about safety. That doesn't surprise you. I mean, all of us are. They're concerned about good schools. So this isn't changed. They're, they're concerned about having access to things such as restaurants, et cetera. So that, that's not really new information. That continues to be an issue that we found before. Next slide, please. They also want some place to do things, to have fun when you're not at work. And so one of the things that, that I know that, and I'll say this now and I'll say it again, the things that you guys have been working on in the city, whether it's city council or CRA or Main Street or some of the other initiatives, actually address most of his recommendations. So I, I would see this report as really reinforcement of what, of what the direction that you're taking. Next slide, please. So if you look at, if you look at this one, it's just saying that there's not a significant increase in the understanding, the awareness of what may be available. Perhaps that's because many of the people responding are commuting, although commuting, we'll see in another slide, is relatively short here, so they're not coming from too far away. But if you're 30 minutes away, then maybe you just come to work and go home, right? So downtown, the things we're doing to make it more attractive, we're going to work for this community, this segment of the community as well. Next slide. What kind of houses do people want? Now, you know, seven years ago, we were really concerned about people that they may hire at Advent Health, not having a place to live at all. I think many of those concerns have been addressed by the, some of the developments that have occurred and are, are planned to occur. And we have upscale apartments now with, with the development behind Publix or next to Publix. We have a number of new developments. Some of those meet exactly what people want, which is a, a larger, nicer house with room for an office inside. Next slide, please. So if you look at, if you look at the amenities, they're, they're saying they're, again, they, they don't really know significant numbers of some of the things we have. So we have, you know, world-class tennis center here. That would be something I think that would appeal to this segment if they knew about it. They also don't know so much about what we have at Skydive City, but I understand that's a niche kind of a activity. But, you know, you're redeveloping the theater downtown. There are a lot of things that are coming that we need to do a good job of advertising, waving the flag, if you will, in front of these people. Crime, everybody's worried about that. They don't like hearing things. They don't like hearing about lockdowns at the schools, but I know we're working towards that. We're working on transportation. They don't like traffic. Who likes traffic? And if you don't know, I think we had the county safety committee here in city hall Wednesday again. And so that's two times now in the last several months they've been in our town, which is a really good thing. Next one, please. So what, what's happened, we have these recommendations that Dr. Neely summarized the different data and suggested what we might do based on understanding that. And again, as I said, you're going to, you're going to read these and you're going to say, yep, we're doing that. Yeah, we're doing that. And that's really good because he didn't know about all the things that you're already doing. He just is seeing the data and suggesting that we want to make sure we provide space. We want walkability. You know, you want to have perhaps help with people getting into houses. I, I don't know exactly how that would work, although we have it in CRA. He would, he wouldn't know that, but, next slide, please. The walkability is huge, but you've addressed that. You're continuing to address that. The discussion you just had before was you're putting some kind of a greenway maybe down that spine. You know, I don't, I don't know how many millions that you've been spending on sidewalk paving, which is all good stuff, which contributes to this. So what, that all discussion you had really hits this recommendation. Next one, please. And then I, I want to kind of pause at this one. We have in Z E D C, you know, we have a three-year contract. Thank you for approving that. And it has, in the three years, some, some sort of a research or work project to do. Year one was this project, and then we have year two and three. And somewhere in year two and three, we wanted to do a significant job fair to assist employers like Beduco gear up. But if, if you just think about the timing to get their facility up, we probably won't be doing that in 2025. It's now sounding like a 2026 thing. And so at our last steering committee meeting, we were talking about our marketing abilities and kind of our marketing initiative at Z E D C, which is clearly Zephyr Hills, a website. And so the reason I'm talking about that here, if we're going to look at redeveloping really our, our marketing media presence, what a good time we, we could use to incorporate these amenities in the community, which I think we should do. We, if, if you look at that, we already have a focus on education, which is another one of his recommendations. Next slide, please. So we, we want to continue to let people know that the education story for our community, it's much stronger, I think, than what most people understand. So that, that's an opportunity for us to continue to work on that. It would assist in meeting these recommendations you talked about. Next one, please. And then continue to, to develop or promote what happens downtown. And you had that great report at the CRA meeting from Antoine. And you're, you're going to continue to see that happening Saturday. We're having a fair downtown. So, you know, we got Pigs and Z Hills in two weeks, I guess, less than two weeks. So that's coming and those things are really good. What we need to do is publicize those better and we need to work towards it. Next one, please. We have worked hard on traffic already. He's suggesting we want to be sure we do that and we are doing that. So I'm real, real happy that, again, with what's happening in that regard. He talks about perhaps downtown buses. I know you've talked about some of that with CRA discussions already. So I think we're, I think we're addressing these recommendations. Next one, please. And that's. And that's it. So it was a good report. Did we learn a whole lot? I think we reinforced things that maybe we already thought. But it's good to have somebody from the outside to look at our community and say, here's some things to think about. Any questions that I could answer? Or if I can't, maybe Vicki could, so.
The one thing that I, you know, when we did this report in seventeen, the thing to remember, we didn't have any housing for the people that were working at the hospital. They were all commuting forty-five minutes away. And so, so we've come a long way. It, it looks like the people still want the same things that they wanted then. But I think that we've done a good job to address most of what, you know, is attracting those healthcare workers, which are a huge, huge employers in our communities. So I think we just keep looking at that. And, and, you know, I guess this does reinforce that we, they.
Well, it does.
Yeah.
Right.
You've done good stuff.
And the thing that we can't do, I think, individually, we really can't snap our fingers and have a whole lot more physicians to hire for the hospital or more nurses to hire. But I will tell you, there's a major initiative at PHSC. They just got state funding for to create an institute. The whole goal of the institute is to increase the number of healthcare workers. And they're working hard on that. You know, and they do serve our community as well. So hopefully that'll pass, pay, pay off and we'll get some more healthcare workers.
And I think it's a nationwide shortage, really, that you see coming. So all the things to talk about that you offer, that's what's going to bring them here, so.
That's right. Yeah.
I thought it was interesting that they still are kind of prefer larger lots and things. But all the new development has sold out. So, and a lot of what we're promoting, the, the market seems to support townhomes and apartments and the smaller lots. So I, I think there's just a.
Little mismatch there?
Well, a little disconnect of, of, you know, I guess maybe you look at a suburban, an idea and you want this. But to achieve it at the prices and everything, we're, we're getting something different. I, I know that, you know, I mean, healthcare is going crazy. They're building a Orlando Health Hospital.
Right.
They've just built a Bay Care Hospital.
Right.
And the Adventist Hospital, all in Wesley Chapel, is doing a huge addition. So, I mean, it's booming.
Right.
Adventist is doing a emergency room type thing out there. So, you know, I think it's something that we, it's, it's still a very important business to our community.
Yes.
And, and I think the aging, you know, the statistics on, on some of the population demographics are in our favor in terms of getting more and better healthcare. But yeah, I think, I think it's a very good project to keep up with. And, you know, it, it was hard to get through to some of them, but.
Right. And thank you for the effort you made.
Yeah, you still got good information, I think.
Yeah, it is good information.
Well, and one of the things I need, we need to look at is there's a difference between what the doctors and the higher paid want. They want a Lake Javita. They want the, you know, that kind of facility thing. Whereas the nurses, you know, the others, they need that smaller that we already have.
They're less expensive.
So are we going to be able to have a Lake Javita over here? We don't really have the land for that. But, you know, at least it's close enough that it will attract.
Randy, one of the things that I picked up from that, and it's the thing, our Achilles heel is the school system, is our public school system here. And I don't know, you know, we just all need to brainstorm and figure a way that we can help them. Because it's, I mean, it's, it's a marketing nightmare if you're trying to sell a house to a person here or Wesley. I mean, you got an A school out here, not here.
Right, right, right.
So it's, it's something, it, it's a problem.
And I think, I think in that regard, we, we need to work to make people understand that, for example, the Kirkland Ranch Academy is really our school. I mean, it's available to our students. And that's a really innovative school that if people were knowing about it, that would be an attractant, I think.
I'm thinking of the academy at the farm. But, you know, there's a waiting list. You know, it's like, we need more of those. Yeah, that's right.
That's, I, I, you know, I, I, I agree with all that. But I think that's part of the problem with our schools is they're taking so many students out to these charter schools and things that there's, there, there's, that's what creates some of the deficit deficiencies in our public schools.
I, I will tell you that the new superintendent, John Legg, was at our December Chamber breakfast and spoke. And one of, one of his goals, and it's, it's a good goal, is to have our public schools though as good as those so that they do compete for those, those students. And I, I think it's such a good goal if he's working towards it. And I have optimism that we're going to get closer, but it's a challenge. Yeah.
And it's definitely a challenge. And, and you know, the, the thing is, we, we need to try and look at what we can do to help. But I can tell you that there was a time, because I spent thirty years there, and I've seen it transfer over from when our schools were the ones where they wanted to bring their kids to. So it's not that it was, you know, we had that.
Right.
We just need to get it back.
Why did it change exactly?
So, all right.
Thank you, guys.
All right, well, thank you.
Item three point two, in, in your packet, you have a, a memo that talks about code enforcement and the reasons for to, to remain in the building department. I spoke with Councilman Spina earlier today. Couple of questions that, that he had asked me. It was about how often the code officers utilize PD officers. And that answer is about once, once to twice a week, it appears, over the past two months. We also had a conversation regarding staff and, and work schedules, talking with the building official and the code officer. Once we get to full staff, we'd like to be able to tweak those schedules to where it's not just Monday through Friday, but it's, you know, it's a Tuesday through Saturday or a Wednesday through Sunday. And not, not an every week thing, but just so we can throw some curveballs to the, the weekend warriors that are doing work without permits and, or, or coming into town and, you know, bringing in food trucks where they shouldn't. So we'll be able to address that. The, the Mikey Sutton's position, that individual, we've, we've hired that. And that individual begins Wednesday on the twenty-ninth, two days from now. Conversation that we had, excuse me, last meeting, was discuss zones or the potential of zones within the officers. Some conversation that we've had was creating three districts or zones, being a CRA district for one, one officer, a residential only officer and a commercial only officer to address those three areas. Also had a conversation with councilmen, or President Burgess, earlier today to talk about, and he brought up the zones and the possibility of maybe breaking it into smaller zones. And we kind of flood that area for a, a week or so and then, and move to the next zone. Just kind of work through all the zones and probably go right back to Zone One once we get down to, you know, whatever that last zone may be. Couple of things that we're working on currently. Current, as of today, the Calvin's Old Position is a senior code inspector. And we're working to change that title to a senior building inspector. I think there's some misunderstanding of what the code, what we define as a code inspector. And really what we're looking for is a building inspector. So we're going to make that change. Also, Gene Brown, when he retired, his title was Public Safety Officer. And we're looking to redefine that as a senior code officer. That the Public Safety Officer was split between fire and code. What we're looking to do is, is really have our code officers be code officers and, but then also cross train in buildings so they can help on the building side and fire, so they can help on the fire side as well. They also just recently went through some FEMA training disaster assessments that were required by FEMA. I think the building department code, code guys did a great job of doing damage assessments. But we learned there were some areas that we need to improve on and some things that we need to do differently. So they've, you know, they attended that training, came up with a game plan, not only to, to correct some current deficiencies from this event, but also address some moving forward. Just, you know, unfortunately, it's not an if, it's a when. You know, the next natural disaster comes through here. So they're planning for that as well. Are there any questions? Uh, one thing, we do use the PD. It is for issuance of citations. And then also they utilize the officers for translations because not everyone speaks Spanish. And, and we're very fortunate that our, our PD has not, they don't just speak English and Spanish. We have a few different languages that are spoken. So the code officers do utilize PD officers for translations as well in the field. Right, yeah, I'm sorry. For clarifications on the citations, for the issuance of citations, it's not for every citation. It's just when they feel unsafe for whatever that reason is as they're issuing that citation, so.
And you utilize the court system, you know, for those citations that aren't handled and everything that go to enforcement?
Correct, yes. Yeah, so, so the way it works and, and building official and code officer here, city attorney as well, they can jump in at any time if I misstep here. But they, complaint comes in. It's either citizen-driven or it's staff-initiated. They go out, make contact with the individual. They try to gain compliance with conversation of, hey, you're, you're in violation of, of X code. You need to do X, Y, and Z to come into compliance. The, the citizen or the, the property either comes into compliance or does not. If they do not come into compliance, they're given a, a citation with, I believe, ten days. They give a ten-day notice to, to come at thirty? Ten to thirty-day notice to come into compliance. If they do not come into compliance, then they're issued a summons to, to appear in court. And depending on the court schedules, that can be anywhere from thirty to sixty days before they go to the court hearing. And at that point, the judge determines either they come in, well, we tell judge if they've come into compliance prior to that, or the judge gives them a timeframe to come into compliance. So there's a lot of times I think there's miss, misunderstanding or misconception that code officers go out and issue a citation and it's going to be fixed, you know, kind of overnight. You know, unfortunately, sometimes it takes ninety days or longer. And sometimes, depending on who the individual is or the case, it, it kind of just drags on and on. Because the punishment of not coming into compliance is you spend some time in jail. Well, at some point, throwing them in jail doesn't make a difference either because they're not going to come into compliance. So it's a very long, potentially a very long process. So any questions? Sorry.
Well, I just, yeah, I thought we had a good conversation. And I think these are some good ideas on make this a little more functional. And, and we have to make sure, especially in the older parts of town, that we're keeping up with, with what's going on. The only thing I would ask is that we revisit this in about six months, just kind of get an update and see what's going on.
And I think along those lines of the getting them in compliance, I mean, I know like in HOAs and things like that, you can, you start, you keep finding and finding somewhere along the line, you actually can start, you know, proceedings and putting a lien on their house. So I mean, is that, is that of something that's available to us on habitual offenders? Where, you know, eventually it gets to the point where?
So it just depends on the, on the situation. Some things, you know, if we, we can't get compliance and it's something that we can take care of because of a life safety issue, we can have our guys go in and take care of whether it's securing a building or, you know, high grass and weeds. And we can lean the property for our cost for that.
Okay.
But then we also get the fines turned into a judgment. And those hang out there like any other judgment. So we can, you know, if the property, they attach to the property, if they ever goes to sell. Generally, we can get compliance by having a court order to issue, you know, the, the judge will not only impose a fine, but will impose a thirty-day compliance order. So it gives them thirty days to come into compliance. If they don't, we can take them back to court. That's when they can hold them in contempt. I mean, it's a rare situation where people get put in jail multiple times and still don't clean up their property. But we have a few that, that's been a long, ongoing problem, but.
I know, that's a long, that's definitely a long haul there.
Yeah.
More chronic, I mean.
Yeah, but we can, we can.
It's face that.
We can increase the punishments if it's repeat within the same calendar year. We can get the fines doubled.
Yeah, you got to get their attention somehow or another, so.
Yeah.
And I think the idea of having the inspectors across, you know, with the code enforcement and so on. Because, you know, the former building official, when he was a building inspector and the other inspector was here, that's what they did. They did inspections and code enforcement. That was their, kind of like their job. And so I, I look at it this way, though. Everybody in the city's in code enforcement. We are, we see things, you know, we bring attention. I think all of our city employees that are riding around, they're the ones that see, you know, what's going on. It's just a, a matter of, you know, getting addressed. And I know there's going to be times when building is, is busy and the inspectors will have to be busy with that. But when they're not busy with building, then maybe we make them busy with code enforcement. And, you know, we can, it's, it's just going to, it's going to take a lot of effort. I know that. But I mean, I'd like the idea of everybody being cross-trained and things too, so.
Yeah, I, I agree that last council, or last staff meeting, I asked Public Works and Utilities to push the message, message out to the, to the employees of, hey, if you see something, see something, say something. I know it's not quite what we're doing here. But you go to the C, click fix, put it in.
Yeah, we don't want them addressing the residents. We don't want them just making, bringing it to our attention internally.
But turn it in. I mean, you know, egos are checked at the door.
Right.
You know, they, they see it, they see an issue, submit it to code, code addresses it. They may already be working on it and they say, hey, thanks. I'm already, you know, I already have a case on that. Or I wasn't aware of it. And then they, they go address it. So, and we, we talked to some a little bit today about some ideas on how to encourage employees to, you know, pick up snipe signs. You know, they all drive around in trucks, pick it up and throw it in the bed. Maybe create a little competition of who can, you know, who gets the most signs in a, in a month or something like that legally.
Mr. Biggins been cracking down on that. We had a company that was putting out snipe signs, kind of blasting the city with them. And we sent them a notice, a certified mail, not to do that again, you know, kind of warning the first time. And they were, signs were collected. And then they did it again in about six months. And we cited them for each sign. So I think it was like twenty-three counts or something. The judge we had is Judge Joseph Pavlic. So he's pretty familiar with the process. And I think we ended up getting two hundred and fifty dollars a fine per citation. So it come up forty-five hundred dollars or something for, you know, an out-of-town company that the citation.
That's an attention getter, yeah.
Yeah, so we're making, we're making strides on it. It just takes some time.
So you're saying now we're going to have code enforcement working someone on weekends checking?
Uh, we're, we're going to get there. It's not going to be instant.
I think that we see, I see personally a lot of that. I see roofs going up. They'll start Saturday morning and it'll be done by, and I don't see no permits nowhere. But I'm not a code enforcement agent. So rather they might have it in the house. I don't know. But I see a lot of that.
That is the plan, once we get to full staff. So like I said, we have a, a officer beginning Wednesday. And then we're, we're working on updating the public, or excuse me, the senior code inspector's job description. And then that'll be posted. And once we get to full staffing, we'll start working, figure out a schedule of work at weekends. It won't be every weekend. It won't, it won't be every Saturday and Sunday, but we'll mix them in there.
On call if someone says, hey, you know, we got someone, I don't know.
Well, just the fact that you see them out on the weekend occasionally is going to like give pause to what they're doing, yeah.
A super tail.
I just want to thank Joel for those monthly reports he sends us. Very informative. It's nice just to look through them and see what's happening. And I, I, I enjoy that, so thank you.
And you guys can look at this, you got job security because that code enforcement is going to be a never-ending problem, so. All right, anything else on that?
I know, sir. I know, sir.
All right.
Um, item 3.3 is just for information, uh, again, memo, it's in your packet. This is the, the, um, 2025 state appropriation project funding request from the city. We kind of talked in general at the last meeting, um, but the, the four projects that we plan on submitting are the Ninth Avenue Pond, uh, that's the Yinglings Edition neighborhood, Ninth Ave, Pond floods, not just during Milton, um, um, but in other storm events. We're asking for an appropriation of $850,000 and the city would have to put in, or we're saying that we'll put in 150, so it's a million dollar project, um, to try to create some additional capacity there. We're having LIDAR and some surveying done, um, currently and to see what type of capacity we can build. And so essentially what we'll do is take the side slopes and, and make them a little more vertical possibly, um, completely vertical. We're also working with the landowner, Ms., um, Crosley, um, to the east of the pond. We've got her in contact with the county and with state EM to try to work through Elevate Florida, which I thought was wide open. But the application, the, the application process has not begun, so it's a very long, um, process, I believe, that is, um, it's not going to be very quick for the homeowners. So she's working through that, we're working with her, uh, try to help her as much as we possibly can. But that's, that's a side note from our appropriations request, uh, that pond is about eight or 0.87 acres. Uh, number two, and these are in no order, uh, the Meadowwood Estates, uh, Stormwater Pump Generator. So earlier, uh, council approved the pump station improvements, this is to put a generator at that pump station. Uh, so when the power does go out, it'll continue to operate and, and push water, um, therefore reducing the likelihood of Meadowwood flooding. And the request there is $150,000 for that generator. Um, item three is a continuation at the airport, um, we're asking for $5.5 million for the FBO slash terminal. That includes landslide access, um, vehicular parking, aircraft park, you know, apron, uh, pilot passenger amenities, lobby, planning rooms, rental car service area, wifi, those types of things, administrative offices, um, again, that's a $5.5 million ask. And the final, uh, number four is Zephyr Park Improvements. Um, you guys know what we're doing, we've asked for that for the last couple of years there, and the request amount there is $5 million with the city, um, guaranteeing that we'll put a million dollars towards that. So approved, we'll have $6 million, uh, for Zephyr Park in the upcoming years. Any questions?
Think that, uh, conversation with Zephyr Creek Shed, we should make that request?
So I think my, my goal is to, um, is to have that request, but it not selfishly, not impact these requests. Um, so I think a, a joint, uh, conversation with the county and, and trying to get Zephyr Creek Shed, um, funded either through the state, through the feds. So I've had conversations, I had a conversation with Senator Burgess today, I've had, um, conversations, uh, last week with, um, the county. And, and the idea of trying to partner with the county, either through some federal funding, I know there's an opportunity of federal appropriation coming up. I believe we'll be able to ask for up to $5 million, so we'll have a conversation with Congresswoman Lee's office and her aides to see if that's something that she would support. I know she was here, um, spent about a day with us during Milton, um, we toured her all around, showed her all the impacts. The state, or excuse me, the county was also awarded, I think it was $585 million for improvements. What was not, um, highly publicized is I think 60% of that has to go towards HUD and, uh, so housing and, and education. Uh, so, you know, that's a much smaller number, still a big number, but it's a much smaller number. So I think we have to, um, be that squeaky wheel at the county to say, hey, some of that money needs to come to this side. Right, yeah, so, you know, there, there is a plan that was shown, I think I forwarded that to each of you. I think an estimated cost to do the three phases that Pasco had proposed, uh, on Zephyr Creek was about $17 million. Um, you know, so if we can get, we, the city can get, uh, you know, federal appropriations of 5 million, the state can throw in a little bit of money and then the, the appropria, or the, the funding that this county just got from the, I don't know, we don't know where it came from, to be honest with you. I think it was the federal level, um, I think there's some, there's enough funding there to take care of that. Um, I know I see Swift Mud here, so we'll be talking to Swift Mud as well, um, about that, about funding of that. But I think, you know, a, a multi-agency approach to it, we can get this done, um, maybe a little bit quicker than what we had anticipated, because there's some dollars that possibly are going to be on the table.
Yeah, I just know we have an opportunity here for, with the resiliency money to get, it, it's, we need to get it like this year, as much as we can. I don't think we have any chance of getting 5 million for Zephyr Park or our airport, I really don't. But I think if we had a large ticket drainage project, I think we stand a much better chance. So I'd rather see us make the ask, you know, but I agree with you, that's, it's not a city, that's not a city issue, it's a local, uh, city, county, state issue, yeah. But, but I just don't want to, there's a plan, did you send that out to them, the one?
Yes, the, the three phase.
And it was done in 2021. It identified the system and the problems with the system and some solutions. And it's kind of like, okay, here it is, you know, we just need dollars.
Right.
So, um, I just, you know, I think we need to push the county and, and get it, because it'll, it's good for everybody in the whole area and take it on down to, uh, all the way as, to the Hillsborough River as we can.
Yeah, I believe that, I believe that plan, I think it, it started there at, um, 301 Chancy and worked north to, um, Silver Oaks and, and that outfall. Um, there, there's also, I think it was you and I had the conversation about the, um, talking with the county about the pumping, the potential pumping from Silver Oaks to Geiger Pond, um, and there is a plan there and that plan, uh, excuse me, there was a plan that Mickey Farrell, resident in Silver Oaks, I know all of you know Mickey, but, um, that he had drawn up. And, um, I was given that back in, uh, September, I think it was, when we had the joint meeting with Pasco County. And so that was, that plan was given to Branford, and I believe the county's looking at that, um, the piping's in place. It was, the plan was to utilize the existing, um, reclaim line that runs from the Handcart wastewater treatment plant to Silver Oaks, uh, to provide reclaimed water to the golf course. And the idea of the plan is to put a, a large pump at, inside Silver Oaks and, and, excuse me, put a valve in, cut off the, you know, quit, cut the flow of reclaim and then push stormwater west towards Geiger Pond and, you know, underneath or Long Island, underneath Island into Geiger Pond. I've not heard anything on that, I know Councilman Smith reached out to, um, the county to ask for that meeting. I don't know that I've seen a, a date come back yet.
We, we worked with a young man named Brett Bjornberg, I think is his name, and, uh, really sharp, used to work for Swift Mud, I think. And, um, he was working on this project, uh, but I just, it's went a little silent and I'm a little scared, you know? I don't want, I know, and I know the county's big, I know, but we've had significant problems here.
Well, and I think what, if you remember, we had the meeting 20 years ago, oh four, Ken Littlefield was there, he was our state rep at the time, the county was there talking about that pumping down to the Geiger Pond, which wasn't even built yet, was, it was in the, you know, process. So we've seen now, 20 years later, that is a need, and that's like you said, if we need to get the money, we need to look into that because that's definitely something that we can't let go another 20 years and wait for it to happen again.
And I mean, even if there's something we need to make an ask on from Lake Necessity somewhere else, I mean, we need to ask for it, you know?
So I will say, and, and I think the Zephyr Park improvements of just, um, as far as an, an identity standpoint for the citizens, I don't think that gets funded. What we're putting in here, and this is conversations that we've had with, um, the senator and the rep, um, is stormwater, um, related improvements, water quantity, quality, and so there's language in there for that, um, to tie it into. And that becomes, that is a major part of the Zephyr Creek Shed, uh, and the conveyance system from Silver.
Yeah, because Zephyr Lake doesn't exist without the stormwater.
Exactly, so, so that is wrapped up in there, and I failed to mention that, because I, when we say improvements, we think playground and, and squash pad, but it is much larger than that.
Retention area.
Right.
All right, is that it for appropriations?
Yes, sir.
Okay, city attorney's report, he has one item for us.
Sub business item 4.1, it's first reading of resolution number 845-25, resolution of the City Council of the City of Zephyr Hills, Florida, authorizing the City Council of the City of Zephyr Hills participate in a joint meeting of the Municipal Association of Pasco to discuss matters of mutual interest, providing for an effective date, this will be for the February 6th, 2025, MAP meeting in San Antonio.
Second?
A motion to second, approve resolution number 845-25, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, pass, motion passing unanimously. All right, mayor announcements.
I just have a couple of things, um, Dr. Stovall and I, like I say, we went across town and we went to visit with AM Skills. I'm not sure if you guys are all aware of what they do, but the, they are going, we're going to try to get them over here for a ZEDC, um, stakeholders meeting. One of the things that they talked about that they are working on are these boot camps, and they partnered with the county to do a utilities boot camp, boot camp, that, um, they'd like to see about bringing that into the city here. That because we, that's the hardest job, is the water, the water department jobs, right? So these are the things that they could bring over here and do a boot camp, have multiple people there, maybe get you two or three people that can be interviewed from those boot camps. So, uh, we're, we're going to continue to have conversations with them, connect Billy with that too. Uh, if, if, once we know what meeting they're going to come to the ZEDC, if you're available, that would be great. Uh, and that way you can kind of understand what they do. It's, it's a pretty amazing program, um, obviously, I've been hoping for years, and Dr. Stovall and I have been hoping to get a whole facility over here, but hey, even if we can get small boot camps over here to help our, um, new manufacturers that are coming in to get their training and get them ready and get their certificates ready, then it's a big step, so that's what we're doing. We, um, Todd, thank you for having conversation with the county on the Geiger Road sidewalk. I think you guys know, I told you I got a little bit upset over all of that, the Geiger Road started without all the things that we asked that we thought were going to happen, I quickly threw out an email and, and, um, and, and we did get response back and Todd's working on that with them because just paving the road does not solve safety issues out on that road. Yes, we're glad they're paving the road, but not shifting the road to make a sidewalk ability to go in there is a huge issue. So, and no lighting and so on and so forth, it just kind of snowballs. So just so you know, we've been going back and forth with them and, and Todd really is working hard on that, and I appreciate that. And then in our subdivision last Friday, at about 4:15, one of my neighbors' water thing popped, I mean, literally gushed. It was a valve and I appreciate our utilities department, our water guys, and gosh, I can't think of his name. I, Jay came and I can't think of his name, came within 30 minutes, cause.
I don't know who the on-call guy was.
Yeah, yeah, and I know him, I've met him 100 times and my mind's just blank, but I'll write him a little note. But it was just streaming down the road, so they were out there within 20 minutes and dug that, that up and got that flow stopped and then came back and fixed it. And, and that's the responsiveness that we have, they had just gotten home at 3:30 and they were back out there and within minutes to really take care of it. So I, I appreciated that for sure, that, you know, our residents know that we're going to take care of things even when it's after hours. That's all I have.
All right, city manager?
I have nothing this evening.
City attorney?
Nothing from me.
All right, start with Councilman Spina.
I have nothing. I just want to thank the mayor for bringing the youth council, it's, I'm, I'm glad it's taking off. I think it's a great idea and that's all I have, thanks.
Mr. Pro, if you would allow me to remind you that we, um, had a discussion about South Avenue and the, um, the speed sensor sign, flashing Pete's seed, speed sensor sign. It was located there prior to, um, uh, Milton, but then was removed and relocated, um, to some other location. And, uh, the residents who were so happy to see that, um, have now called me several times and wanted to know, when is it coming back? So I understand that there is a permanent, uh, plan in place at some point, um, but any assistance you could give me would be greatly appreciated on that. I, I also want to thank our, uh, public works folks, our streets folks, um, our sanitation workers. Whenever I make a call or send a notice through C Clicks Fix, uh, the response is really impressive. Thank you, nothing further for me.
Thank you, um, a couple of things, mayor, great job with the youth council, great job, really good, there's a great young people, it'll be good for them. Um, and, and I'm glad you got it going again, like the shirts too, nice. Um, on Geiger Road, we knew we were, we were in trouble when they restripped it a month ago, right before they tore it up, so. I didn't quite get that.
I stupidity.
How, they probably spent 40 or 50,000 dollars restriping, I don't know, you know?
The part that's even better is the operations manager called Shane to ask him what was going on out there. So, um, I'll just leave it at that.
Yeah, so.
Wow.
If we get that road shifted, we, we can, we can forget, get the road shifted anyway. But the, the other thing, have, has anybody driven on that thing since they, I mean, it is, it is absolutely terrible now, but it'll, it'll be better, but it is bad.
I think they, they've kind of halted till they get some of this stuff figured out, is what I think happened. So yes, it's worse, but it's not worse, but it's speed control now. But, um, yeah, I think that's kind of what happened, and yes, I did, I did put a wrench in there.
No, that, that's all right, that's, that's good, nothing matter with that. Amber Smith, thank you for being here tonight, she's here, she was most helpful during the storm, just thank you for what you do for our city, I really appreciate that. Clyde Bragnell, oldest sitting council member, sat through this thing, thank you for being here tonight, so.
27 years or something.
How many, how many years Clyde, 27, 29? 29, so that's amazing, I, I don't think anybody's going to ever get there. Um, the, the, the last thing I had was, we had talked about having some type of a, uh, a wrap-up meeting on what went good, what went bad during the storm prepared. Have, have we done anything on the scheduling on that, or how's, y'all did?
So we did at the staff level, uh, all the department heads came together, um, and we did the kind of the good, bad and ugly. Um, so we did that, um, I didn't bring it back to council.
That's all right, I just wanted to make sure.
We did a staff.
And it's kind of a written form where it can be transferred in case somebody, Shane leaves and the next person comes in, they know, hey, don't, don't do this because it was terrible.
Right, right, yep.
But, but it's those little things, it's those little details on getting prepared for it that need to be written down and make sure everybody understands them, because when you crunch time comes, you're like, you have that, oh yeah, let's just go through our, go through it, so. Yeah, so, and it's, it's coming again, and the one, one thing I'm really, I, we, we need to make sure is that conveyance system is clean. We need to do that, look at it in May, even if we, we walk it, and then look at it during June, yeah, the whole, through the whole thing. Because that, that caused some problems, those trees and everything in it, because there's going to be trees that fall down during the storm anyway. So we need to make sure the refrigerators and the limbs and everybody along there knows, don't throw crap in there, so, thank you, that's it.
All right, and, uh, I want to thank Amber too, because she came to our, uh, developments, uh, HOA meeting, first one I had after the storms and everything. She handled it very, all the questions very well, Councilman Spina was there too. And, uh, I told, I sent her an email afterward, but she talked a lot of people off the ledge there, which in turn helps staff and us. So thank you Amber for that, and that's all I have, meeting adjourned.